Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board. This is the regular meeting of the Select Board for July 21st, 2020. This meeting, as all meetings during the health emergency, is being held remotely using the Zoom meeting platform, and it is being recorded. The quorum of the Select Board is participating from their respective remote locations. At this time, I'd like to move that the Select Board go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiation strategy in connection with negotiations with the Brookline Police Union. As the Chair of the Select Board, I hereby declare that an open meeting could have a detrimental effect on the contract negotiation positions of the town. Want to make note that we will return to the open public session after our executive session. All in favor? Ms. Heller? Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Venzkoye?
Aye.
I'll aye.
And Chair of both sides, thank you. Devin, will you notify people of what they have to do to get out of the meeting so that they can get back in at the end of our executive session? And tell us when we can begin our deliberations?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board. This is a regular meeting of the Select Board for July 21st, 2020. As I always say, this meeting, as all meetings during this health emergency, is being held remotely using the Zoom meeting platform. It is also being recorded. The quorum of the Select Board is participating from their respective remote locations, and we have a quorum. Just said that. Let's start with announcements. I'd like to make a couple announcements, but also start with a statement. In the last weekend, we lost two giants of the struggle for human rights. Reverend C.T. Vivian, at age 95, Lieutenant of Martin Luther King, an important member in civil rights movement, and Representative John Lewis, who died at age 80, but who would have been with us for many, many more years but for pancreatic cancer. Former U.N. Ambassador Andrew Young, while recounting his memories of John Lewis, noted how old the civil rights warriors of the 1960s have lived to be. And he attributed that to the fact that they fought injustice, but they never allowed anger and hate to eat at their soul. They met love, they met hate with love, which is something that Lewis often said, and they met anger with calm defiance. I'm asking members of the Brookline public, who hold strongly-held opinions of what changes need to be made in policing or other areas, to heed Andrew Young's words and avoid the angry hateful comments and name-calling that we have been hearing lately at this board meeting as well as online. Members of the Select Board and other town bodies work for you on a voluntary basis, and we do a lot of hard work when we have other things to do. And we do not deserve the vitriol that we receive. You know, impotent rage doesn't help the town, nor does it help whatever cause a person's may be believing in. So I hope you remember the words of Reverend Young, and keep the vitriol down and avoid the anger and hatred in our discussions tonight as well as every other night. You know, John Lewis fought oppression through the age of 15, and he did it without anger and without hatred. Matter of fact, he did it with joy and happiness. Some of us participated in a panel discussion with State Representative Mika Elagardo and Adrian Walker of The Globe last Wednesday. They were talking with Jack Curtis of the MLK Committee about a movie that was streamed by the Coolidge Corner Theater titled John Lewis: Good Trouble. I urge everyone to try to see the movie. It may be difficult to find it, but I think Coolidge Corner Theater maybe livestreaming it for a little more time, because it gives a great picture of a great human being, John Lewis, and most importantly, now that we know that he is gone, it shows his life and the struggles that he engaged in, but also the happiness and joy he is able to enjoy while fighting the difficult battle for civil and human rights. I'd like to mention one of the most moving moments of the movie was when Henry Louis Gates presented John Lewis with an extraordinary gift, the voting card of John Lewis's great-great-great-grandfather, who just out of enslavement registered to vote during Reconstruction. In this time of voter suppression from U.S. political groups and foreign forces and voter apathy, we should remember that despite our struggles, that man, an ancestor of John Lewis in the deep South just out of slavery, had the intellectual strength and courage to register to vote and control his future. As we approach November election and earlier, the September 1st primary election, John Lewis and his ancestor challenge us to take responsibility for our future by voting in the upcoming elections. I'd like to also say something addressed to the police officers on the job here in Brookline. We're going through a difficult period, heated debate over policing issues, and I say to you, do not overreact to what you may view as hostility directed your way for crimes and omissions committed in other communities. Reasonable people know and appreciate the shift of Brookline policing from a warrior model to a guardian model with an emphasis on community policing, and this board knows and appreciates that. But know that the anger felt by many is real. It may in fact be due to a bad interaction with a Brookline police officer, or it may be the generalized trauma that many black people experience from seeing on TV news and hearing about the graphic and chilling details of cold-blooded murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis and other such videos of police violence. I'm asking you, please, continue to work with the Select Board and the town to reduce that anger. Next, I have two announcements. First, September, we have an event coming up to commemorate and remember the 9/11 terror attacks on the World Trade Center, the Field in Pennsylvania, and of course, the Pentagon. We're going to have a 9/11 Remembrance Event that will include a live program at Fire Station Number 5 on September 11, and pre-recorded messages that will be broadcast on B.I.G. after the live program. We'll have messages from our elected representatives and a special message from firefighter Peter Maurier, whose brother Manuel de Valle Jr., a seven-year veteran of the New York City Fire Department, was with Engine Number 5 and responded on September 11, 2001, even though he had just finished a tour of duty. Firefighter de Valle was one of the 343 New York City firefighters who perished in the collapse of the World Trade Center towers. More information on this Remembrance Event will be given as we approach September 11, but keep that, or put that on your calendar. Next, today, as many of you know, we received notice from the Attorney General that Warren Article 21 of the November 2019 Town Meeting, the town's fossil fuel-free warrant article is found to be preempted by the general laws and the Code of Massachusetts Regulations. I'm sure there will be much examination of the opinion and strategizing as what should be the next move. I'm sure that the public will be giving us some comments on that very shortly, but if any Select Board members have any thoughts or observations, please share them. Or provide your own updates or announcements.
I will just say that, yeah, I was very distressed as one of the many co-petitioners on this article. I was very distressed to see this opinion. I can't say I was surprised, but I think the fact that the Attorney General cited three areas of the general laws, which she felt prohibited, this bylaw, you know, is a significant hurdle to overcome. And I think that part of the battle, at least, for climate reimagining and reform has got to come, has got to be at the state level, because we need to, you know, change those three, the state building code, the gas code, and the Department of Public Utilities regulations. And we need to, you know, convince the state that we've got to have some flexibility. We may not get as much as we got with Article 21, but it's a start, and I've already had a conversation with the principal petitioner on the article, and I know that he is disappointed as well. So I would just urge everyone not to lose heart, but we have to look at where our target has to be in terms of moving climate issues towards what we want, which is a carbon-free environment, and we're only going to be able to do that by changing some of the laws and regulations at the state level.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other thoughts or comments, or your own updates or announcements? Ms. Hamilton?
Hi. Thank you. I just wanted to bring people's attention to an event that I'm signed up for tomorrow evening via Zoom, I believe, sponsored by a group called Powerful Pathways, and it's called Planning for Equity. They say that it's going to be a critical discussion centering the distinct perspectives of three planners of color who work in the Massachusetts region, working to create more equitable cities in Massachusetts and across America. You can find more information on Eventbrite. It starts at 5:30 p.m.
Thank you.
Let me just mention one other thing, and that's the census. I always give you an update, and I know we're not having a meeting next week, or the week after, and that's, the week after is called Census Push Week. And this past Thursday, we had census representatives at the farmer's market. Unfortunately, there was some snafu, and they ended up inside the tent of the farmer's market, and the farmer's market was wonderfully accommodating, the manager there, but they'd like another go at it outside, and I'll have to talk with Superintendent Morgan about it, on July 30th. So that week of July 27th to Saturday, August 1st, I've talked preliminarily with the census representative that we work with, and we've outlined a list of places that we would like to, the census would like to be present, will be outside, in the Potterham neighborhood, in High Street, in the food pantry, St. Paul's Food Pantry, the farmer's market, Trader Joe's, and the Eggmont Street Food Pantry, and we may add some places there. We're looking for places that have a lot of foot traffic and where people can, you know, sign up. And we did get some signups last week at the farmer's market, so I think it's worth doing, and I'll be talking more to the census committee at our meeting on Monday, and perhaps we can figure out how to put a list of this online, so people will know. They can go to our webpage. I'll ask Mr. Grechner's help in arranging that. Once we have the schedule down and the hours that we're going to utilize. So that's what I have. The census is very important, as you know, and we're really making a push to sign, to get more people to respond.
Great, thank you. Important announcement. Any other announcements, comments, or updates?
One, to build off of Nancy's words about the census committee, just a reminder that this committee, we did not expect to be doing this work this late into the game, this type of work, and that these are all volunteers that have signed up to be part of this committee, and they have stuck with us, continuing to meet, you know, into the summer, deep into the summer, and it looks like we'll be meeting into the fall as deadlines get pushed back and back and back. So just want to say, you know, join Nancy in saying thank you to our committee that has stuck with us and continues to do the work. They're phenomenal. Thank you also to the folks who put forward and pushed forward Warren Article 21, this Warren article that would ban new fossil fuel infrastructure in big construction, and like, the amount of work that went into that, the amount of people, frankly, who were involved in putting this together, the amount of money that they spent making sure that this proposal was as defensible as it could be, and the amount of time that everyone put into this, including our very own advisory committee, Town Meeting, the Select Board, and so many others, I think was, and how well it passed in Town Meeting, I think was an expression of this community's commitment to do what it takes to make sure that we are on the front lines of combating the climate crisis, you know, and that this isn't over, and that more and more engagement will be, will take place. I know folks that were involved in putting this together are going to be meeting and thinking about how we move provisions like this forward, and it's up to us to continue as a board and as a community to think about ways that we can move this forward, including figuring out how we can, in the meantime, incentivize people to do what we think is possible, which is to construct buildings that do not rely on fossil fuels, and to do it in a way that also makes sure that the people that are putting those developments together can also do it in a fiscally sound way. So anyway, just all that to say, thank you to all the people that worked on this. You know, your efforts weren't in vain, and it was an important conversation we had. The last thing I want to say is that I too mourn the loss of two giants, C.T. Vivian and John Lewis, and what they've meant for American history and what they mean to us today. I think also it's important to remember that the methods that they employed during their time were not approved methods of the time, and you see that in the fact that John Lewis, for himself, was jailed dozens of times for what we consider today to be the civil rights of people to peaceful protest, but they were not afforded that same opportunity later back then. I'm also reminded of the words of Yale professor, law professor Emily Bazelon, who recently said, "When social movements include a lot of upheaval, and people are wrestling for power and taking power who have not had it before and who deserve to have more power, they're never going to do it all correctly. It's going to be messy." They're not going to say everything with complete decorum. They're not only going to go so far that the establishment finds acceptable. That's just not how it's going to be. And so what I would encourage people to do, as you listen to folks on the other side of an issue, is to not focus so much on their methods, but to actually focus on what brings them out into the street, what brings them to public comment, what brings them to spend their available time to push for social change, and that underlying message is, there is injustice, and our residents frankly expect us, and rightfully so, expect us to do something about it. And how that message is conveyed, what those methods look like, should be secondary to the underlying message. The moment we start to focus on that and not the underlying message, we're missing the entire point. And so as these folks who are not, who have not been empowered in our system, seek to take some power, seek to become part of the system, it should be messy. We should expect it, at the very least, to be messy, and then we should still welcome them into the system, and we should listen, we should hear for that underlying message. And I think tonight, I'm hopeful that we'll take some actions that show that we have been listening. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I just say one more thing about John Lewis, because I forgot to say this earlier? I had the privilege of working with John Lewis when I was working on the Obama campaign in Florida, and so I met him, we had some one-on-one conversations, as well as I heard his speeches and his rallies, and he was an incredibly thoughtful person, a very eloquent person, a person who really felt things very deeply, but who also communicated a joy in life and a calmness and a purpose going forward. And I really, I hold him as one of the great role models of our time, and he was really, I don't know, I hate the word prince, but he was definitely a prince among people, and his delivery, everything about him is just, was fabulous, and I'd always admired him, and I was so thrilled that I had that opportunity to work with him.
Thank you. And I might add that many high school graduates from Brookline High School had the privilege of going on a program called Sojourner to the Past, which took a trip through the South, visiting various key locales of the civil rights movement, and on each trip, John Lewis made an effort, or actually met with the group and interacted with them, and I can just tell you from my own son's perspective, that was a life-changing experience. What Nancy said about John Lewis, you know, his quiet elegance and way that he pulled ideas together, I mean, it's really reflected in what I heard from my son coming back from that, from the trip that he took. But there are a lot of Brookline High School students who had that opportunity, and I hope that they're reflecting on their experiences with John Lewis now that he has passed.
There are a few words, sorry, last in line to speak. I appreciate the fact that Bernard's background right now is a view of the heavens, a starlit sky.
No, it's the Milky Way.
The Milky Way, right. And
Bridge.
A number of our fellow citizens in Brookline, Brookline residents from all over town, have had the experience this week of viewing the comet, or at least searching the skies, searching the heavens for the comet, from Lars Anderson Park, and to a person, they came back, you know, based on the testimony I've seen on Facebook and other places, thrilled and enlarged. I think that kind of experience of taking a little bit of time out of your day in the dark of night and to stare up at the heavens, look up, makes all of us better. And if we can carry that same determination to look up and be aspirational and to not aim down, and I'm sorry to say, I think a number of people in the past week have aimed down. They have chosen the path of vilification and distortion to try to make their point. And that is one thing that never happened during the Article 21 discussions. There were people who disagreed on the article, and yet they made the article better by working together. And I do think that's what we're doing on this board right now with this challenge that we've undertaken of reimagining policing. We are working together respectfully, listening collegially, all with the shared aim of making the ultimate product better, doing it better, and getting it done. And if all of those who are observing from the sidelines and have opinions about our work would maybe just take a little bit of time to think of us as fellow residents of the town, volunteers who have the best interests of the town at heart, and are working in our own messy way, to use Ronald Fernandez's word, in our own messy way to get a good result, and maybe just show a little bit more understanding and tolerance before they launch into their next shaming of individuals or attacks on individuals as being racist. I think would be best for the process. I think would be best for all of us as individuals, and I think all of us would be better off if we could take a little bit of time, in the next day or two, it's going to, the time's going to run out to actually see the comet, but there's still time tonight, tomorrow night, maybe even Thursday night, and just look up and think about going through life, looking up, and not, thank you Bernard, and not aiming down.
I was looking out my window. The sky looks clear.
Yeah, it's a great night.
So I think I'll go out to Lars Anderson or someplace where there's little light blue shit and see what I can see.
By the way, the Brookline Police made all of this possible by relaxing, and also the Parks Department, by relaxing the usual park closings rule, and it was great for everybody.
Good. Okay, anything else before we move on to public comment? Okay, next, public comment. I'd like to make the public comment section available primarily for people who have issues or comments that are not on our agenda, or that relate to items not on our agenda tonight. The task force and sanctuary medicinals are two items that I understand people would like to comment on, even though it's on the agenda. So I'm going to allow a limited period for comments on the task force when that item comes up on the agenda, like we did last week, which I think worked out very well. And with respect to sanctuary, I ask people to put their comments or questions into the chat box, and I will respond to it with the help of Devin, of course, who will alert me to those comments as they come in, and will try to respond to them at that time. So with that, Devin, do we have people lined up to your public comments?
Yes, there are four people signed up for public comment tonight. The first person is Rob Rosengard, and Rob has been promoted to a panelist.
Mr. Rosengard.
Hello. Are you able to, okay, great.
Yeah, we can both hear and see you.
Hello, the Select Board, Brookline Select Board, and members of the community. Thank you for your time. Please refer to a document that may have been provided to you, some PowerPoint slides, but they're not required to. I'd like to quickly talk today about the Brookline Police. I grew up and I lived in Brookline, and so has my family and relatives, grandparents, parents, a lot of relatives and siblings still live in Brookline. I owe a lot to this community, and that's why I'm speaking today. In 2011, I joined the Brookline CERT program. Um, in 2011, I joined the Brookline CERT program, which is a Citizens Emergency Response Team. It was taught by Brookline Police Officers. And they, in this program, they teach members of the community to help other people, to help other members of the community. We're all volunteers and we forge deep ties between the community and the Brookline Police. And, uh, later on, I parlayed that to join the Medical Reserve Corps, which is part of the Health Department and also has tight cooperation with the Brookline Police. Uh, we've, we've shown up at the Boston Marathon repeatedly, helped, um, with the flu clinics and, and many other parades and, and happenings around Brookline. Uh, I like to look at myself as somebody that has had to call, call on the police many times through the years, uh, for all different various reasons. Uh, some were emergencies, sometimes I would call the non-emergency numbers. For example, I found two lost dogs. I witnessed a child getting hit by a car. Uh, giant tree limb fell in, in the street and I had to get the police there. The point is the, the police respond to many different types of emergencies and they often don't really know what they're going to get themselves into until they get there. Uh, I wrote several thank you notes to the Brookline Police to express my gratitude over the years. Uh, there was one back that I saved for whatever reason. I also sent a donation at the time for, for these, um, to Paul Cullenane of Brookline Police. Uh, and one time when I had a, uh, an ill and combative relative that was at my home that needed some help and the police came rushing over. Uh, another time I interacted,
Thirty seconds.
Yeah. I interacted with an officer, um, at the funeral, at a funeral, he was doing a funeral duty. And, uh, I was very thankful that he made it all the way to Sharon, Massachusetts to, to help. Um, so let me just say in conclusion, um, the police create a loving, peaceful and safe environment for my family and neighbors. Uh, they've been there before when I needed them. They've led by example. They've trained the community to be a force multiplier to, to help others.
You've reached three minutes.
And they work with face, faith-based groups to reduce the likelihood of terrorism. And I really appreciate them and would hope that we'll continue to fully fund the police. Thank you for your time and sorry for going over.
Thank you. And, uh, by the way, I apologize that we didn't mention that we do have a three-minute time limit. Um, we're a little flexible with that, but, uh, I hope that future speakers would just be aware that they should, uh, really focus their comments so that they stay within that three limits, three-minute limit if possible. So, next, uh,
John Harris is the next person signed up.
Thank you very much. Uh, John Harris, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight. As it happens, my remarks are going to back up, uh, to several statements from, uh, Select Board members earlier tonight. I'm shocked by the murders of George Floyd, Ahmet Arberry, Elijah McClain and others. They were horrific. Black Lives Matter. I hope the Brookline Policing Task Force begins work ASAP so that we hear any and all first-person testimony and evidence of discriminatory, threatening behavior on the part of members of the Brookline Police Force, not the police forces of Seattle or Minneapolis. I'm deeply concerned about driving while black, about the use of military equipment and tactics by police forces, et cetera. I'm perfectly willing to consider a planned shift of social service functions to other town departments. But I need to inform a group of people new to town politics of something they may not know or may lack appreciation for. Brookline has a volunteer town government. It only works if people step up to help decide things. New people are needed and are eagerly invited to participate. This requires congeniality, an open mind and a recognition we are all neighbors. And practically, I've learned that your opponent on one issue becomes your strongest ally on the next. It does not help you to alienate people. But recently, a small but determined group new to town affairs have come in with a chip on their shoulder and a sense of antagonism from the get-go. No justice, no sleep at the home of a Select Board member with noise makers at 8:00 AM on a Sunday morning is clearly designed to intimidate. Uh, also, after someone posted online the work numbers of another Select Board member whose supervisor began getting calls accusing her of being a racist, apparently part of a doxing campaign to harm people's livelihoods. Also, at least twice, when people asked to be removed from a listserv they never requested to be on, faked up versions of their emails that falsely attributed inflammatory language in their own, as their own were posted on Facebook. This intransigent behavior is designed to intimidate and to bully. These people announce their intractable demands and the things they require. Nope. In Brookline, we submit proposals and most importantly, we give the reasons why. We understand we have to convince people and not browbeat them. This is the first instance in my experience of an organized group or group or groups of bullies in town affairs. Judging by their comments at the last two meetings, at least some of them looked to Select Board Member Fernandez for inspiration and at least spiritual guidance.
You have thirty seconds.
I call on him to personally disavow their bullying behavior and urge them to sit down at the table with the rest of us and work through their cause through groups like the Policing Task Force, HACX, Brookline for Everyone and Inclusive Brookline to move the town forward. To conclude, Black Lives Matter, representative democracy matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, John, Devin?
The next person signed up for public comment is Josh Anyaosa. Josh, you've been promoted to a panelist and you can unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I appreciate, um, all your endeavors and efforts. I have prepared a speech, um, before now, but, um, unfortunately I had to go pick up my car and I left my speech at home. So, um, the, the point is, uh, I was on the phone with, um, Selectman John on Saturday. I spoke with Raul Fernandez. Um, and I know everybody has good intention in mind. And, um, but, uh, when I spoke to Selectman John, I think from his point, which I didn't agree, is that he wanted to see firsthand experiences of people who suffered racism, uh, racial profiling and any kind of police, um, injustice in Brookline. And, uh, I made the point clear to him that most of the time, given the history of, uh, our country, most African-Americans or most people of color don't feel comfortable and do not trust the authority. And rightfully so, if you look at the history, right after slavery and even if, um, down to the bombing in Tulsa, black businesses, so Emmett Hill. And most of the cases, the officers responsible have gone unpunished. So we need to extend our hand to them. We need them to trust us. We, the governing body needs to show them that we treat, we want to treat them as a human being. And this is why I want to support the task force and I volunteer to be part of the task force if needed. I think there's only good that comes from reimagining policing in Brookline. Um, I know police had eight points of what they've implemented and it's been really good. But if they can do eight points, that means there are fifteen points for them to improve. It's human nature. Um, I think there'll be greater good from reimagining policing in, uh, Brookline. There is racism in Brookline. Simply because we don't see it, because we are white, uh, most of us are white.
You have thirty seconds.
Doesn't mean it doesn't exist. So I really, I'm really urging the selectmen to approve this. Um, because it's time for us to do what is right. Time for us to reach out to people of color and say, we got your back. We believe you and we want to be there for you. And this is a classic example of showing our support to Black Lives Matter. It's not only lip services and carrying banners and everything. Let's do this. We can do it. In Colorado,
You've reached your three minutes.
Sorry, in Colorado, they took unlimited liability, um, sorry. I'll stop there. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Ryan Black.
Hi, everyone. Uh, am I good to start?
Yes.
Uh, Chris, well, I want to wish a good evening to all the Select Board members. I, I, I do want to address some of the points I've been bringing up though, because, uh, I, I'm not going to accuse anyone of disingenuousness, but I feel like there's a lot of inaccurate conflation or exaggeration going on directed at people who are pushing very hard for reimagining of, you know, public safety here in Brookline. And I really feel it's important to underline that why we're so passionate is that we're just advocating for public safety to be equally safe for all our community members here in Brookline. That we don't feel this should be contentious issue because we believe those who believe that, you know, we're just really advocating for our neighbors. I, 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 I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a bit shaken because, you know, I, we were accused earlier of name-calling. And like, I just like, I can't think of anyone aside from a straight individual here or there who's done some name-calling. And like, it, it just feels disingenuous to start off a Select Board meeting accusing like that side of name-calling or Select Board Member Ben Sike punching down. It's like, I, I really struggle to scratch my mind. It's just like, if, if that's the point of emphasis you're drawing on this, I guess like, I, I don't want to accuse you of disingenuousness, but that does seem disingenuous to me. Anyway, I'll, I'll let others speak. Uh, I'll give the rest of my time.
Next person signed up for public comment is Deborah Brown.
Good evening, uh, Deborah Brown here. Uh, I wanted to say just a, a couple of words about John Lewis.
Excuse me, Deborah, can I interrupt a second?
Sure.
Yeah, uh, I apologize. I had problems with my bandwidth and was off the, um, uh, meeting for a while. Uh, but I'm back, uh, so just want to let people know that. And I, I may go off camera just to save my bandwidth. It's not, uh, that I don't want you to see my pretty face. It's just that I want to save my bandwidth. So I'm sorry, Deborah, continue.
Sure, no problem. So basically I wanted to say that, you know, John Lewis had a purpose in life. From the time he was, you know, holding sermons with his chickens in the yard. And, and if you ever want to read a powerful book, uh, part of which describes his contributions to the civil rights movement, it's, uh, Taylor Branch's Parting the Waters. Uh, that, that's a civil rights book that will leave you in tears. He, he was a great role model. But one of the questions that I want to ask is, you know, who, who among us can recognize the John Lewis that we have now? And, and I would argue that we, we have John Lewis's in this struggle. And that he was strong, he was pointed, but he was also messy. I mean, and, and he fought for change. He was arrested 24 times. And you can say that what he fought for, you know, there were, there were different issues. Clearly there's been progress, but there's more progress to be made. And the, the idea that people feel vilified or that there are distortions, you know, I'm, I'm not sure where that gets us when that's what our leaders started meeting off with. Uh, we can all agree to disagree. I believe that Brookline has a lot of racism in it. I believe that a lot of people, and I know people don't like using the word racist, and maybe you should stand in front of a mirror and just say racist, 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 racist. Or ask, how have I not been racist today? How have I been an anti-racist? But the point is, we all have isms. We all have people that we don't understand and we have to get out of our own way and begin to do that. And I know that there are times when you may say that I'm not Miss Collegiality or that I'm pushing the limits. But when you use words that hurt, and that's any of us, that, you know, there's an impact.
You have thirty seconds.
And it can be subtle. So if all of us are working for the best interest of the town, then I would argue that tolerance and understanding actually means that we need to be working to eliminate racism in the way that John Lewis would have done it. And that was being bold, being strong, being pointed and being messy. And that's going to make some of us uncomfortable. It's even going to make me uncomfortable based on some of the things that I heard that happened to individual people.
You've reached three minutes.
But we have to, we have to embrace some of it. As, as uncomfortable as it makes us, we, we just have to do it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next person signed up for public comment is Amy Takonami. You've been promoted.
Hi. Amy Takonami, Precinct 10. Um, I was originally going to speak on the task force, but would like to quickly react to some of the opening remarks from the Select Board meeting. Um, I agree that the late John Lewis's dedication to nonviolent resistance in the civil rights movement deserves to be remembered and honored. I was actually one of the students that Bernard Green mentioned who went on the Sojourn trip in, at Brookline High School. We are the first group of students to go in 2012, um, and got to meet Congressman Lewis. I think however, it's important to remember, like Deborah just mentioned, that this was nonviolence resistance in the face of numerous and brutal police beatings. To evoke his memory, to chastise the tone and civility of a debate about police violence is to me, pretty warped way to honor his legacy. If, as was mentioned, that this is an unacceptable level of so-called vitriol for people in a voluntary position, I have a simple solution for you. I would say quit. If you're more concerned about the way people are telling you about the harm and pain that they've endured, rather than the harm and pain itself, you'd be doing us all a favor if you stepped away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person signed up for public comment is Emma Nash. Emma, you have been promoted to a panelist and can share your view and unmute yourself when you're comfortable.
Hear me?
We can.
Okay. Um, like Amy, I originally wanted to speak on the task force, but also would like to respond to some of what was said earlier. Um,
Just a little louder.
I just want to remind the Select Board that while it doesn't feel good to be on the opposite end of vitriol, um, the members of the board all hold a lot more power here than the people who are criticizing them right now. Um, yes, you are volunteering a lot of your time, albeit with a small stipend, but you are volunteering a lot of your time, but you still have power over what kind of town we live in and people's jobs and people's lives. Um, so you know, there are so many other ways to serve the town, um, that I have to say, if you want to volunteer, there's tons of ways to do that that don't involve exerting that much power over how other people live. And, you know, I, I have to say that my experience with Brookline politics so far is that a lot of people join elected office and then don't expect to be treated like elected officials. Being an elected official, being in a position of power means you have to take criticism. And yes, some of it will be vitriolic, um, but a lot of it will also be reasonable. And some of the criticism that has been brought up tonight to me has sounded entirely reasonable. Um, so I, I just hope that all the members of the board will keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Emma was the last person signed up for public comment at this time. There are 69 attendees. And I don't see that anyone has indicated they'd like to further. Uh, Susan Park would like to add a public comment.
Okay. Ms. Park, are you there?
It just takes a minute, Bernard, for them to be promoted. Susan, you can unmute yourself. You've been promoted to a panelist, and your 3 minutes will begin.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Nice to see everyone. I'll just keep this very brief. In honor of John Lewis, I just wanted to just read one of his quotes, that's all. Because I just felt like this resonated with me. It says, "We were beaten, we were tear-gassed. I thought I was going to die on this bridge, but somehow and some way, God Almighty, help me here. We cannot give up now. We cannot give in. We must keep the faith, keep our eyes on the prize." And that was on Selma. So I just wanted to share that, just to remember John Lewis the Great.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no other public comments, I will move on to first the approving of the approval of select board minutes for June 30th and July 7, 2020. Anyone have any corrections or edits to those minutes that they haven't provided to Kate already? Okay, I'll move approval of the minutes for June 30, 2020, and July 7, 2020. All in favor? Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Van Scoia? That looked like an "I." I think you're muted, but, and chair votes "aye."
And I wrote "aye" as well, thank you, sir.
Okay. Next, I want to do what we're calling consolidated approvals of a number of capital projects that, you know, we have, you know, summaries in the packet as well as backup materials, but they're basically, you know, required approvals in town meeting budget items. So I think there's no need for us to go through each one unless someone has a specific question about one of them. So I'd like to move approval of various contracts and related approvals for capital projects appearing on the select board calendar listed as items 6B through 6F plus 6H. 6G, we're going to take separately. But anyway, on favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Van Scoia?
Aye.
And chair votes "aye." All right, next, let me get back in. Item 6G, question of approving and authorizing the chair or his designee to execute a memorandum of agreement between the town of Brookline, the cities of Boston, Cambridge, Everett, and Somerville, and Motivate Massachusetts LLC and the Metropolitan Area Planning Council related to the participation of the parties in the regional bike share program. Ms. Hamilton, would you like to give us some background on this and sort of explain what the boards or what the towns' obligations are pursuant to this?
Sure. Absolutely. So for many of us, but for some of us that may not know, we are one of the original four Blue Bikes community, formerly Hubway. That has expanded, and there are, I think, four additional communities that want to join the memorandum of agreement with Blue Bikes. And this would expand the network to Newton, Everett, and a few other communities. I'm not surprised that this is expanding because for a while, once Blue Bikes started in the metro Boston area, some of the other communities that didn't have the resources to buy in, because it was about $100,000 a station, went with another provider, Lime Bikes, Ant Bike. And then what you had were basically these digital divides where Blue Bikes were not really able to go into outside jurisdictions, and the Dockless Bikes were not really allowed to come into Brookline and other, the original four communities. There was an exclusive agreement that we had with Hubway at the time. So this agreement, the long and short of it is, it doesn't cost us any money to allow these other communities to come on board. We're one of the last communities to sign off, so all of the other communities have signed this agreement, and they're just waiting on us. And we already have a representative assigned. I know that that was the chair's question that he left on my voicemail earlier. We've had a long dormant Hubway committee that I'm assigned to. The last task that we had was about three years ago when we got extra money and we were able to cite a number of new Hubway Blue Bikes locations in town. So it's not, it doesn't require a lot of participation on behalf of the select board, but it is a potential revenue generator, depending on how things end up. But when we had the scooter pilot program last year, we anticipated that Blue Bike ridership was going to go down because the assumption was made that someone who would rent a scooter might also be the same person who's renting a shared bike. And in fact, the opposite was true. Ridership on Blue Bikes went up. And we've just continued to see this even in the midst of COVID. So ridership is pretty robust. I think this is good for a regional transportation alternative, especially since people are still hesitant to take public transit. So I really hope that we sign this tonight.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? No? Okay. I move approval of authorizing the chair or his designee to execute a memorandum of agreement between the town of Brookline, the cities of Boston, Cambridge, Everett, and Somerville, and Motivate Massachusetts LLC and the Metropolitan Area Planning Council related to participation of the parties in the regional bike share program. All in favor? Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Van Scoia?
Aye.
And chair votes "aye." Thank you. Thank you, Heather. Next, question of approving the following contract amendments with Skanska USA Building, Inc., and that's the high school project. So, you know, I asked Mr. Masak and Ms. Heller to be prepared to explain to us what's going on here. Okay, Skanska, question of approving the following contract amendments with Skanska USA Building, Inc., Skanska Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment involving the final buyout of the Brookline High School Expansion Project in the amount of $22,203,702, and Skanska change order for miscellaneous changes involving the Brookline High School Expansion Project in the amount of $710,394.
Okay, let me begin, just to give you a very brief overview. And then we have both Ray Masak, who is our in-house project manager, and Andy Felix, who is our, I won't call him outhouse, but he's our owner's project manager from Hill International, and he does a lot of the negotiation here. So I want to direct your attention. So this is a pretty big moment because we are finally signing with Skanska the guaranteed maximum price agreement on the high school project. And it's taken longer than any of us would have predicted. And certainly, the building commission has been on the case and talking about it at every meeting. The reasons that we believe that it's taken so long have to do with the incredible complexity of this project. It's not just the money. I mean, this is the biggest, in terms of monetary amounts, this is the biggest project we have ever engaged in in the town. But it's also the fact that we're not dealing with just one building and putting it up. We're dealing with several different parts. We're dealing with a former 111 Cypress, now 22 Tappan. We're involved in going over the T. We're involved in building a platform, a plaza. We're involved in the renovation of Cypress. We're in Cypress Field. We're involved in the renovation of Tappan Gym. We're involved in the streetscape in front of Tappan Gym. We're involved in the building the STEM wing and renovating the third floor, et cetera. So we have so much on our plate, and each project has its challenge. Each, look at them as individual pieces. They all have their challenges. And we got into a place in the very early winter where we thought we were on the verge of having a signed GMP, and then COVID hit. And so that has delayed us until now. But I have a lot of faith in all of the negotiations, and they, both Andy Felix and Ray Masak have been involved with Skanska. And they've worked with George Cole, who's one of the co-chairs of the project and a member of the building commission and probably knows the most about this in terms of the building committee. So I have a lot of faith that they have done a really important and good job. I would direct your attention to the letter from Andy Felix to Ray Masak. It's in your packet on page. The packet page is, I believe, 118. And on the third page of the letter, there is a chart which basically shows you where we were in March just before COVID hit us and where we are now with this agreement. And you will see, if you analyze the numbers, that we've been able to negotiate $1.5 million worth of savings on the general contract and saved another $500,000 approximately on change orders. So, you know, it's been a worthwhile project and a worthwhile endeavor in that respect. And I'm confident that going forward, we will have, we will be able to complete this project. While it might not be on time, mostly because of COVID, we're working hard to get all the numbers together and come up with a final number for town meeting that will get us all the different pieces of the project with some certainty. But I'll let Ray and Andy talk about the GMP process.
And Andy, I apologize for not recognizing you in the beginning. I'm new to this project and its personnel. So welcome to the meeting, and thank you.
And just let me point out that Andy always stands out because he wears very brightly colored shirts. We always comment, they're wonderful.
Thank you.
Andy, would you like to say a few comments about the process? Because the process did take quite long. We did it in components, something we haven't done with Devotion and something we won't do with Driscoll when we got documents. And just be really brief, please.
Sure, I'll summarize, obviously, what's included in this GMP with Skanska is really four components of the projects. It's the 22 Tappan Street, the STEM addition, the MBTA Plaza, and the station work associated, and the elevator modernization in the main campus of the building. The balance of the project, which Nancy mentioned, is third-floor renovation, Tappan Gym, balance of additional deferred maintenance scope and streetscapes that is currently not in this GMP and is going to be bid separately via Chapter 149 procurement process come this August. So this GMP only represents the two main buildings and components of deferred maintenance, as I mentioned. So it did take much longer than we had all anticipated. Primarily, when the numbers came in was just before we all experienced stay-at-home. So it took some time to get through the negotiations and the review process with Skanska and comments back from them in order to come to an agreed upon value, as was referenced by Nancy in the letter that I sent to Ray. So it was quite a collaborative effort on the part of Ray, myself, and working with Skanska. There was some give and take in each direction in order to get to this point of the project. Now we can focus on actually administering and monitoring the dollars that are within this GMP to track them accordingly and the expenditures against these budgets that have been established in here. So huge milestone on the project.
Thank you. Ray, anything to add for asking or opening up for questions? Why don't you open it up for questions? I think Nancy and Andy have answered most of the questions on the process. All right, okay. Any questions from the select board?
May I?
Yes, of course, John.
And if I missed the number, forgive me. Has there been any change in the number that we are expecting to come to town meeting for approval in terms of the added final cost of the project?
Let me just address that. We don't know yet, very frankly, John, because one of our purposes in deferring it to November was to give us the time to get bids, as Andy mentioned, under Chapter 149A, on the 22 Tappan and on the STEM, on the third-floor renovation, the deferred maintenance, the other deferred maintenance that we're not including here, and the Tappan Streetscape. So we don't know. I think that even if the number is very, very similar, the important thing is that we will have certainty. We will have much, much more certainty because that number that we put out or is as far along ago as March, which seems like a lifetime, that number was based on 60% estimates. Now we'll have numbers that are based on bids, bids in hand. And that's really important. I think the advisory committee, rightly so, was concerned about the fact that the costs were not as certain as they could be. And this method gives us the certainty that we hope to have. We've also been negotiating very hard with the T, and I think that Ray has made some progress on that to bring the costs down there. So this is one step of the process, and we brought the cost down here. But, you know, again, I don't want to put a number out there until we really have more certainty.
Nancy, if you don't mind, just what was the number that we've been working with up until now? Just to remind everybody.
You mean the number that we said we needed an extra $32 million?
$32 million, right.
Yeah. And?
We're still working with that.
Well, we're working on the various pieces that made that up.
Yeah.
And we're hoping to have bids in hand on those different pieces so we will have a better idea of whether the 60% estimates were really correct or not, or on target. We're hoping that it's less, but obviously, we don't know that yet.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to move approval of the following contract amendments with Skanska USA Building Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for a scheduled update involving the final buyout of the Brookline High School Expansion Project in the amount of $22,213,702, and Skanska Change Order for miscellaneous changes involving the Brookline High School Expansion Project in the amount of $710,394. All in favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Van Scoia?
Aye.
And chair votes "aye." Thank you, all. Next, item eight on our calendar. Question, the authorizing the hiring of an E nine-one-one dispatcher in the Police Department. Superintendent Morgan?
Yes, Superintendent Morgan, Brookline Police Department. Question to fill, vacancy just came up. We had hired a new woman, Melissa Delapaz, and she already worked about six weeks. She was originally from Florida and she had a family emergency or a grandfather who was, took ill down there, who based her. She has returned the flowers to, to care for him and thus resigned from her position here. We have somebody in the pipeline, in an interview, at the same time she did, they were like one and one A, and she is prepared to take the job and move forward. She's eighty percent through the hiring process and we'd like to fill that position now.
Great. Let, let me ask a question. What are the qualifications for dispatchers? They're just a high school ed-?
Yes, based on high school education, but they have to do a skill set, a competency test on the computer and stuff with the dis- to qualify. They go through an interview process. They also have a psychological process they go through prior to hiring and private oral board also. So like I said, we had Melissa Delapaz and another woman, a black female who we're looking to hire. She has said she will take the job if it's, if it's approved and we'd like to move on that.
Okay. The reason why I ask is that I, I hope the department is, as I believe they used to be, recruiting at Brookline High School for these types of positions, which can be a good pipeline into the Police Department or the Fire Department for that matter. And will, will help with the diversity issues. I thi- I think you're still doing that. I just want to encourage you to continue doing that.
Yeah, we, we put it out to everybody we can and try to get the, at most applicants and go through them. As far as this, we had a pretty good response to it. And then as far as, I think that, we had three candidates, like one, one A, one B. And like you said, the, the two candidates, Melissa Delapaz was a minority candidate. We had to the job and the woman who we liked to offer the job to now is a, is a black female.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to move approval of authorizing the hiring of an E nine-one-one dispatcher in the Police Department. All in favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Van Squire?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, Inflammables Licensed Public Hearing. Okay, this is a public hearing question of approving the application for one fifty-eight Winthrop Road LLC. Looks like C dash A, I'm not sure that means. Our Properties, four thirty Harvard Street, Suite One, Brookline for the keeping, storage and use of ten tanks above ground of approximately one hundred fifty gallons of gasoline at one fifty-eight Winthrop Road. That basically means ten cars with gasoline tanks. So who's going to present, who do we have here to present?
Well, Mr. Chair, we, the, the, first of all, the, the application requires sign off or a recommendation from the Fire Department. You do have that. And I believe the applicant is here, Mr. Barrett Parks, so he can speak on, to confirm your suggestion about the nature of this application.
Yep.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. My name is Jonathan Barrett Parks with one fifty-eight Winthrop Road LLC. This is a residential condominium that has been constructed. We're actually about ready to go for a certificate of occupancy. It's five residential units. It is a metal podium deck, a metal and concrete podium deck with three levels of wood frame residential above. The garage is under the building, but it's, it's open on three sides and it is closed in on one side. So this is for ten vehicles that would be the occupants of the building. It is a fully sprinkler building and the garage level has a, a dry system.
Any questions from the board first?
Just want to be clear, this is a, a five unit building you mentioned?
Five, five units, yes.
Would double the number of parking spots.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? So this is a public hearing. Devin, do we have anyone in the queue who would like to make a comment or ask a question?
I did see that Deborah Brown's hand was raised, so I'm going to give her the opportunity to unmute if she'd like to weigh in in this. Hi, Deborah, you're unmuted.
All right, hi, Deborah Brown here. Do you have any stormwater prevention procedures to prevent the gasoline or leakage from the cars to end up in the stormwater drains?
Is that part of the fire, Fire Department's review? Mr. Quettner?
I, I don't know. I think the question is about drainage in the, in the garage area. I, I don't know the answer to the question.
I, I could answer that question. So the building code does require a gas oil separator to be installed if there's anything more than four vehicles. That is in place. It is inspected by both the Plumbing Inspector and Massachusetts Water Resource Authority.
Great, thank you. Any other question, Deborah?
Nope, that takes care of.
Okay. Anyone else in the queue, Devin?
At this time, we have sixty-three attendees. No one has indicated by raising their hand or using the Q and A feature that they would like to offer public comment.
Okay, any other questions from the board? If not, I move approval of the application for one fifty-eight Winthrop Road?
Sorry, Bernard.
Okay, Mr. Fernandez.
I just can't help myself on this. Are those ten spots? Is that because of, of our, of our own bylaws that, that required you to have ten for the, the units that you have or is that?
It, it is, yes. This was permitted back probably about four years ago now, but yes.
Okay, all right, good to know. Thank you.
Okay. So question of approving, I, I move approval of the application for one fifty-eight Winthrop Road LLC, Our Properties, four thirty Harvard Street, Suite One, Brookline. By the way, what does C slash A mean?
Um, I don't. It's supposed to be C slash O, care of, Our Properties, and it's four twenty-one.
Okay. I thought it was a new acronym or something I wasn't aware of. Okay, so I'm moving approval of this for the keeping, storage and use of ten tanks above ground of approximately one hundred fifty gallons of gasoline at one fifty-eight Winthrop Road. All in favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Van Squire?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, another public hearing. A question of approving the application for a transfer of an all alcohol beverages license and in the contact, along with that, approval of the proposed manager, Brian Martins. Who do we have to speak on this? This is Marriott, Courtyard Marriott over on Harvard Street, or Beacon Street.
Good evening, members of the board. Andrew Upton for the applicant and with me is Brian Martins, the proposed manager of record. This, this application is styled as a transfer application, but really what we're doing is we're transferring the license from one entity of Hersha Hospitality Management to another entity of Hersha Hospitality Management. So it is going to be the exact same company that runs it, the exact same hotel, hours, floor plan, every aspect of the operation will be the same tomorrow as it was yesterday. So this is really a technical change. However, we are taking the opportunity to install a new manager, Brian Martins, because the old manager had moved on. Brian's currently the manager at the Hersha property in Cambridge. He's worked at the Revere Hotel. He's worked at the Boxer Hotel in Boston. He's been approved on a liquor license by the Mass ABCC and he has been in charge of the sale, the service and the supervision in sale and service of alcohol in several of his jobs. So that's the overview and with that, Brian and I are glad to answer any questions.
So it, it looks like it's basically a name change. Is, is that correct?
It's an entity change of the license holding special purpose entity.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the, the select board? No questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Are there any questions in the queue, Devin, from the public?
At this time, there are fifty-nine attendees present. No one has indicated in the Q and A or used the hand raise feature to identify that they'd like to make a comment at this time.
Okay. I, I assume that the Courtyard Marriott is aware of concerns of many residents in the area, that they exercise control over, you know, people coming into their property with marijuana and, and using it in, in, on your property. I know it's not relevant to this license transfer, but I just wanted to make the point that that's something that these people are very concerned about. I'm sure Marriott is going to be able to handle that properly, so.
We are aware and that is part of, part of our rules, our internal protocol as well.
Right, great. Okay, unless there's some other public comments or comments or questions from the board, I'd like to move approval of the application for a transfer of an alcohol beverage license, plus approve the proposed manager of Brian Martins. All in favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Van Squire? Are you still here?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Next, we have a multi-part approval. Let me just read it and I think we can vote it all together. Question of approving the application for a transfer of an alcohol beverages and all alcohol beverages restaurant license from Kulak Village Inc., doing business as Magnolia, to DC Associates LLC, doing business as TBD, at six-nine Harvard Street, Brookline. Also approving the proposed manager, Daniel Hen. And we're also looking at an application for a new Common Victuar license for DC Associates LLC, doing business as TBD, at six-nine Harvard Street. And application for a new entertainment license for DC Associates LLC, doing business as TBD, at six-nine Harvard Street, which consists of radio, radio entertainment. And finally, approval of the application for alternate manager Dylan Welsh for DC Associates LLC, doing business as TBD, at six-nine Harvard Street, Brookline. Who's going to tell us about this? Which is a change in what, ownership of the Magnolia Restaurant? And as I see, a change in the menu.
That's right. Good evening, my name's Stephanie Boudreau. I'm representing DC Associates LLC. This is an application, as you pointed out, for a transfer of a license from the existing restaurant, which was Magnolia's, to DC Associates LLC, which is going to be operating a restaurant called The Garrison House. It will be an upscale comfort food restaurant located in the current Magnolia's location. And we're not only seeking an entertainment license for radio, as you point out, but also for TVs at the bar and for live music downstairs, which is currently what, or what Magnolia's had when it was operating. And DC Associates LLC is part of a restaurant group known as the Hawkeye Hospitality Group. It's been around for close to ten years. And the principals and the parties here are Dylan Welsh, who I have, who's on the call as well, and Daniel Hen. Daniel, sorry, Dylan will be the owner of fifty-seven and a half percent of DC Associates. And he's, has been in the industry for years. He currently has four other restaurant concepts in Boston and Somerville. And he's not only going to be a beneficial interest of this license, but we're also moving to have him appointed as an alternate manager for the town of Brookline. Dan Hen is here. He is the proposed manager of record. He has over thirty years' experience in the restaurant industry and has been with Hawkeye Hospitality Group for over seven years. The other minority interest owners are Marty Murphy, who owns thirty-seven and a half percent, and Herschel and Suzanne Byrd, who will each own two and a half percent, but they are essentially silent partners. And the restaurant group has a clean record, having received no violations in the almost ten years of operation. Their plans are to do, after the ABCC approval, some minor renovations to the space and, and then to hopefully open sometime in early twenty-twenty-one. And I will ask, let you ask any questions that you might have at this time.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I had a question.
Okay.
I, I noticed that the license is until two AM and I was wondering if that is the current license or is that an extension of, of what the current license holder has had?
To be honest, I'm not sure what, what Magnolia's had.
I believe, I believe they have a two AM right now, yes.
Correct.
It's their current license.
I guess I'm surprised that we have restaurants that are given licenses to stay open to that hour of the morning, but maybe, maybe I just haven't been out at two AM lately.
Got to get out more often. My question, Mr. Quettner, so the application is for entertainment license, but we only have down here, radio. Is that a problem or does the application actually have more on it?
Well, I, I don't know. I, I noticed that the, the application does indicate instrumental music. The current operation does have the music downstairs. You know, I don't know when you're planning to open, if you feel more comfortable, you know, doing another, another approval. I don't think we'd have to have a public hearing, but I, I feel relatively comfortable with it.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I just want to make sure that it wasn't, you know, not, not going to create a problem for them down, down the road. I mean, you know, ma- maybe, maybe you should write a letter to the select board just saying that entertainment license includes the TVs that are already there or something like that, just so the record, just so the record shows that, you know, this issue was.
Well, I think to be clear, they're talking about live instrumental music, not TVs. So, and it is the same program that Magnolia had and approved downstairs. I, I'm, I want to clarify, this is only in the downstairs location?
Yeah.
And I do believe that the, that the entertainment license application indicated that it was TVs and live music.
Okay.
The application does. For some reason, it didn't, didn't make it to the agenda.
Why don't we just say that we're approving it for TV, radio and instrumental music downstairs?
Yeah, okay, we'll do that. Okay. Any other que-? So downstairs is still going to be a bar, I take it, or because of your diagram of the space didn't clearly show that?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're keeping the same current, relatively the same layout that they have right now.
Okay.
That is part of the current premises.
Right.
Isn't that premises used for private parties?
I believe, yes, they do do some of that currently or in the past when they were operating.
Okay, any other questions? This is a public hearing. No other questions from the board? Devin, do we have anyone in the queue ask for, from the public?
At this time, there are fifty-eight attendees present. No one has used the hand raise feature or indicated in the Q and A that they would like to offer a comment or question at this time.
Okay. Then I'll ask the final question. What are you going to do with that grill on the first floor?
You want it?
Your menu doesn't suggest anything grilled.
No, the grill's, the grill's going.
Okay. If I had room, I'd buy it, but I don't. Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, I move approval of, let's do this in omnibus fashion. Number one, transfer of an all alcohol beverages restaurant license. Number two, approval of the manager, Daniel. Number two, approval of the manager, Daniel Hen. Number three, new common victor license. Number four, new entertainment license consisting of radio, TV, and live entertainment. And number five, the approval of an alternate manager in the person of Dylan Welsh. All in favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Vanscoya?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you. Look forward to, to eating there, assuming that we're out of lockout sometime in the near future.
When do you plan to open?
Probably not so early 2021.
Okay. We may still be under lockdown then, but you have fingers crossed. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next, fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-five consolidated plan and fiscal year twenty-one annual action plan, and this again is a public hearing. Is Mr. Viola going to present this?
I'm here, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I'm having issues with my video. If everybody can hear me, I'm, I'm fine with proceeding that way.
Yep, fine.
Okay, great. This is Joe Viola, Assistant Director for Community Planning, and I'm here to discuss the, as you mentioned, the town's fiscal year's twenty-one to twenty-five consolidated plan and its fiscal twenty-one CDBG annual action plan. I know that there have been a number of items before the board in recent months related to block grant funding. I just wanted to clarify that the public hearing is not related specifically to pandemic relief or CARES funding. It's actually related to the town's normal programming process for CDBG funds. The two documents that we're required to submit to HUD, the consolidated plan, which we have to undertake every five years, and the annual action plan, we're required to complete these documents and to go through a public process before we can receive funding for the, for the current fiscal year. The two plans are complementary in that consolidated plan basically sets forth the priorities and goals for the town's block grant program over that five-year period where the annual action plan actually identifies specific projects and programs that will be funded, that not only meet the broad goals of the consolidated plan, but, you know, they spell out what those, those projects and programs will be for a given fiscal year. Prior to submitting these plans to HUD, of course, we're required to provide opportunities for public comment on the, on the proposed use of federal funding. To that end, most of you will remember that in, you know, after staff advertised the availability of a, of a draft consolidated plan in early January, we prepared, we appeared before the select board and asked you to hold a public hearing, which you did on January 28th. At the public hearing, we provided you an overview of the citizen participation process that leads to that draft consolidated plan, and we noted that we did a community survey. We participated in focus groups and we met with community partners and held targeted discussions with many boards, commissions, and committees, all with the goal of discussing and understanding community needs as we write these plans. So, all of the, all the community input will inform the final version of the consolidated plan and will include comments received since January, including tonight's public hearing, and just noting other comments that we've received offline and writing. We'll do our best to incorporate those comments, to address them, and include them as part of our submission. Our most recent focus has been on completing the fiscal twenty-one CDBG annual action plan, which, as I mentioned, is a, is a companion document to the consolidated plan. That process actually began as past February when staff released a request for proposals for prospective CDBG recipients. Due to the pandemic, we're a little bit behind in the town's advisory committee process. It was actually delayed probably by a month and a half. But the town, the committee was able to hold two public meetings on June seventeenth and June, and June 29th, and members were actually able to hear from every prospective applicant virtually over the course of those two meetings. After the proposals were, the review of proposals were completed, the committee deliberated on funding recommendations at its June 29th meeting. And part of that debate centered on whether or not to use the upcoming fiscal year twenty-one CDBG allocation, provide continued funding for coronavirus relief programs that you probably recall seeing earlier in the year as part of the CARES Act funding that the town received. So, committee's funding recommendations and proposed budget were included in a staff memorandum to the board that was dated, that was dated July 15th, and hopefully, I believe, was included in your packet. The memo to the board noticed, noted that this is certainly not a normal program year and that the town is able to include funding for coronavirus-related relief programs in addition to funding our normal applicants that we receive through the competitive RFP process. So, this is a, a one-time opportunity to exceed what is normally a fifteen percent cap on public services, to provide ongoing relief to programs that are trying to address the effects of coronavirus in Brookline. So, so with that, just briefly, the, the committee funding recommendations, as highlighted in the memo, recommended that the town fund two housing-related projects, including three hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and to be used by the Brookline Housing Authority for capital projects at, at, I believe, two developments, which include funding for doors and locks, energy-efficient boilers, and the installation of mechanical bathroom fans. The recommendations also included two hundred thousand dollars in funding for affordable housing projects through the town's Affordable Housing Program. And that funding could be used for the Kent Street project, which you'll hear more about tonight, for future BHA rental assistance demonstration projects, which the town has partnered with BHA on a number of those applications and the number, and, you know, those projects, at least one of those projects is underway and, and doing a good work in renovating an existing housing authority property. And finally, that housing funding could be used for a project that Hebrew Senior Life is exploring at its Center Street campus. So, these are just a number of housing projects that are in the pipeline for which the Affordable Housing Program funding could be used. Quickly related to public services, committee did its best to allocate a maximum of fifteen percent of the grant, which is about two hundred five thousand dollars, to the seven public service applicants who's, who's, who applied for funding and obviously whose programs provide a number of vital community services. And as I mentioned, there's a one-time opportunity to exceed that public service cap so long as the funding that we're using is being directed to coronavirus relief. The committee saw fit to include an additional allocation of seventy-five thousand dollars to the Brookline Food Pantry for ongoing food security purposes. So, with that, just a brief overview of the CDBG programming process leading up to tonight's public hearing. Obviously, it's a public hearing, and I'm certainly here to answer any questions that either the board or the, or the public has. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Viola. Any questions from the board?
So, this isn't the only CDBG, I guess, for lack of a better term, addendum funding that we're going to get, correct? There's more?
Yes. Pardon me?
I think there are other CDBG-funded projects that we are not voting on tonight that... Or am I not remembering correctly?
This is, the funding we're voting on tonight is for all the projects and programs identified for fiscal twenty-one. I'm not sure if there'll be... Certainly after tonight, the next step will be to execute contracts for all these activities so we can get the money out the door. I don't know that there will be... I don't know that there'll be any other CARES Act funding or any other funding making our way from HUD to the town that will be having a, a discussion on programming. Like, this is it for the year that, that I'm aware of at this point.
Okay, that, that was essentially my question. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I, I was wondering why Brookline Community Mental Health Center withdrew one of their applications?
Correct. After having a conversation with Ian Lang, Executive Director of the Brookline Center for Community Health, Mental Health, the discussion I had with him was that they were, they had alternative sources of funding that they were looking to pursue that would allow them to... CDBG funding comes with, you know, there are certain requirements to using CDBG funding. And I think the Brookline Center was able to forego the use of CDBG funding in place of private financing to accomplish what they needed to do for their facility improvement. That's how it was explained to me. You know, they withdrew their application and, and they requested that, you know... The discussion was that whatever funding they were potentially in line to get would make its way to other programs who were equally, you know, needing the funding for what they're trying to accomplish.
Sure. I, I mean, the, the Community Mental Health Center program or, or project was a very important project, access to their facility. But, you know, if, if they have, you know, the ability to get private money, it's, it's best to have, you know, this limited amount of CDBG money, which also comes with a lot of strings, used elsewhere. So, I think that, that was the reason.
That's my understanding.
Yeah. And, you know, it's really great that they're, yeah, they got that private funding because access to their facility is incredibly, is very, very important. And, you know, if you've ever been up there, it's not easy to get around in a wheelchair. So, any other? I'm sorry.
I was just, I was just going to add that another reason, you know, the funding isn't currently available, CDBG funding. It's allowing, you know, moving forward with other financing is letting them expedite that project, and they're expediting that project with a, at a time when their building is not fully occupied, which, which helps with construction logistics. So, that was another reason for them to, to choose, you know, another direction.
Good. Any other questions before we open it up to public comment?
Yeah, it's just one. Joe, if, if folks were looking for, from previous years, let's say from last year, a report, because I know we need to, they, they need to report on how the funds were used, you know, how successful the programs were, things like that. What, what should they be looking for online? You know, what's the name of that report? How would they be able to find that?
It's funny you mention that. One of our next, one of our next activities, you know, after we get done programming, programming this funding is actually moving on to what's called the CAPER, Combined Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. That acronym, but basically, we'll be in the middle of, of doing just that. You know, making an evaluation of, of what programs were funded, how they were successful they were in using that funding and who they served. So, eventually, a CAPER will be created. It'll be available. Obviously, it's a public document, and we'll have to submit that to HUD, and it'll certainly be available for public review.
So, that's the CAPER from the previous fiscal year, is that right?
Yes, the CAPER always covers the previous fiscal year.
Right, thank you.
But isn't your consolidated plan in the fiscal year action plan already a public document?
Those are public documents. Everything...
Yeah.
Everything we complete for submission to HUD and, and ask for votes on or, you know, ask for a public comment on, you know, everything we work on, it's an open book. They're all public documents, and they're all available for review.
Right. Okay, this is a public hearing. Devin, is there anyone in the public queue that would like to speak?
Yes, Deborah Brown is being promoted to a panelist.
This is my lucky work day, I guess. First of all, I, I wanted to say that Joe and Iwana just do yeoman's work. In, in terms of the consolidated plan and the projects that have been funded, either whether it was CARES or just the applications through the routine process, I was very much impressed with. I had looked at the previous years and had some questions about whether it really did benefit low-income and moderate-income people. So, I, I appreciate the shift to work that is, is more easily identifiable as, as helping populations that HUD has said should be the beneficiaries. I also know that, that Joe and Iwana made some significant efforts to have a public comment that actually involved the non-traditional community members or community voices. And those meetings were supposed to take place, I think, like, the day bef- the day after the town shut down for, because of COVID-19. And so, if I had a request for 2021 that we could revisit or try to make a, a community-based public engagement process, and I don't, and I mean, just not the institutions, but actually grassroots organizations, individuals that may have an interest in, in this work. If, if for no other reason, people should be aware of the good work that takes place. So, they did, you know, they did their outreach, everything was set up, and then COVID hit. But that would be my one request, that, you know, that, that, that the community engagement actually go down a layer or two to get to people that we don't often, or that the town doesn't always work with. So, but otherwise, you know, they, you know, Mel, you know, they, they work day and night. So, I, I just say thank you on that, on that point. So, that's, those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Any other people in the queue?
At this time, there are fifty-one attendees. No one has used the hand raise feature or Q and A to indicate they'd like to offer a comment or question at this time.
So, I'd like to move for a vote on this. Does anyone have a problem with that? No? Okay. So, I'd like to move approval of the town's fiscal year twenty-two-one through twenty-twenty-five consolidated plan for the CDBG program and fiscal year twenty-two-one annual action plan for the town of Brookline's community development block grant program. All in favor, and the fiscal year twenty-one amount is one million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars, which Mr. Viola explained how it's being used in his presentation. All in favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
And Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Vanscoya?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Viola.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask, were there other votes that went along with that, with the approval of the plans? If we could have those on record, I'm, I thought I included those in the memo.
Okay, let me... My packet is on my computer here, so let me...
Sorry about that.
No, that's, that's probably my problem. What page is it on?
They are the very last item on the staff memorandum, and I thought they were included as part of the agenda.
No, it's not on the agenda. No, it's not on the agenda. Okay, okay, on, yeah, on the agenda, on the memo. It's not highlighted. So, okay. I move approval of the submission of the fiscal years twenty twenty-one to twenty-five consolidated plan. Well, we already voted that. I move approval to authorize the chair to execute the application for federal assistance, the SF four twenty-four form and other certifications required for submission of the consolidated and annual action plans. All in favor, Ms. Heller?
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Fernandez?
Hi.
Mr. Van Scoia?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next. I move approval of authorizing the Director of Planning and Community Development to execute environmental review documents required for federally funded projects on behalf of the town. All in favor, Ms. Heller?
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Van Scoia?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. I believe those are the only votes we need to take, right?
That's correct. That's correct, and thank you for doing that.
And thank you for for letting us know that we missed those, so.
We can move on without them. Thank you.
So next, Kent Street Municipal Parking Lot Discussion and Possible Vote on the the Kent Street Developer Evaluation Committee's recommendation related to Two Life Communities' proposal for the reuse of the Kent Street Municipal Parking Lot. So Ms. Hamilton, would you like to say something about this, or do we have someone else to?
Well, Mr. Viola, actually, will probably walk us through how we got to this point. I will just say that this has preceded my time on the board and I just won reelection. So that's how many years this has been going on, and I'm delighted that we're going into another phase. But by no means is it even close to finishing. So with that, Mr. Viola.
Hello again, everybody. Joe Viola, Assistant Director for Community Planning. As the board knows, there's been a significant amount of community process around the Kent Street Parking Lot, all stemming from a town meeting resolution. In that from fall two thousand and sixteen town meeting. So. You know, with the work of the Kent Street Planning Committee that took place over a number of years and the successive. You know, the follow-up of an evaluation committee that reviewed responses to an RFP following the work of the planning committee. We're here tonight to consider the next steps in the process as we look to develop much-needed affordable housing on that Kent Street lot. Again. A developer evaluation committee memorandum was submitted to the board and basically that memorandum describes the the town's work through the Kent Street Planning Committee, noting the neighborhood and public participation in order to determine what kind of a what kind of development would be acceptable for the Kent Street Parking Lot. After holding numerous public meetings and a public hearing, the Kent Street Planning Committee developed an RFP that the select board authorized the town to release just a year ago. The committee, the RFP was released with the intention of soliciting proposals from developers for the reuse of the site as affordable senior housing. And that RFP ultimately led to the town receiving three proposals, which is an outstanding response in that it ultimately elicited responses from two capable and well-regarded developers and operators of affordable senior housing. The Developer Evaluation Committee. All in receipt of those proposals, the Developer Evaluation Committee was convened to and given the charge to review the three proposals in the report pack, to report back to the select board with its recommendations. In undertaking its charge, the Evaluation Committee thoroughly discussed and analyzed these proposals, all while considering the goals and requirements of the RFP. To that end, the committee discussed, the committee considered how the proposals, including building and site design, would complement complement the neighborhood and meet the overarching RFP objectives of of complementing the neighborhood's built environment with whatever gets built on that site. The committee considered the developers' experience in undertaking projects on compact sites in mature neighborhoods, very similar to the context of the Kent Street Parking Lot. The committee considered the developers' track record in leveraging public subsidies and private financing needed to construct affordable senior housing. And finally, the developers, the committee considered the developers' approach to providing and managing service-rich senior housing that's responsive to the needs of the future senior residents that will live on that site. So after seven meetings, including interviews with Two Life Communities and Benebrith in November two thousand and nineteen, the Evaluation Committee at its final meeting on May twenty-first, twenty-first and came to consensus. I know you've, the memorandum included that what their actual vote was, but their recommendation is that the town move forward with negotiations with Two Life Communities to determine if there's a path forward for the town and the developer to partner on a project at that site. And, you know, while the committee's vote all short of recommending that the select board designate Two Life as site developer, it certainly opens the door to further discussion between the two parties to find find a mutually acceptable terms that would be memorialized in a term sheet and eventually would be used as the basis for a town meeting vote for site disposition. So if both parties can agree to terms, the town would see upwards of fifty-four units of affordable senior housing and on top of a lot that an open-air parking lot. And that portable housing development would also include full replacement parking. Just maybe wondering why if we received proposals from two capable developers, why the decision to move forward with Two Life Communities? There were a number of considerations. First, the committee was impressed, obviously, with Two Life's internal and external teams of well-rounded professionals, all of whom would would act in clearly defined roles, developing or delivering on numerous tasks that encompass, you know, the many moving parts that are a housing development project. This same team, in fact, has experience building on challenging sites and financing complex housing projects. And as you probably all know, the Two Life team is known as a, or known quantity as they're currently building out the project, the Temple KI in Bluewich Corner. And by all accounts, very complicated site. And with a very robust public process that, you know, the developer was very engaged in coming up with a project that not only the town could support, but also the neighborhood was very supportive of due to due to all the, you know, it's fit within the with the built environment. Second, the Two Life team is prepared, you know, again, as they did with the Temple KI project, they're prepared to hold a robust, robust public engagement process. And we're confident that their team will be thorough and responsive in shepherding the project for permitting, financing and construction. And again, that's based on the town's having the benefit of partnering with Two Life on the Temple KI project. Third, you know, although both proposals were very attractive, responded to the site very well. I think the committee's preferred Two Life's organizational approach to twenty-four-hour emergency care response for its residents, which is facilitated by by live-in staff. The committee felt that Two Life's emergency coverage staffing and their their monitoring systems that would be put in place for the Kent Street project were superior and would lead to better outcomes for residents in terms of getting any kind of emergency response they need, but also to the neighborhood to, you know, allow onsite staff to manage emergencies to the extent that they can, that, you know, may not involve public safety vehicles showing up in the middle of the evening or the middle of the night. Finally, despite the Evaluation Committee's finding that Two Life's initial subsidy request is excessive, the committee believes that Two Life's successful track record can lead to innovative solutions to how to finance the project. The committee felt strongly that Two Life's approach, experience and track record warrant further discussion and negotiation to determine if the team can if terms can be reached on a manageable subsidy request that would make the project feasible from both the town and the developer's perspective. So with that, I I'm happy to, and I'm sure like Board Member Hamilton and I, we'll do our best to answer any questions you might have. I would note that the the memo includes a number of recommended recommended votes. You know, for your consideration this evening.
So what, in your negotiations with Two Life, what options are there are there to bring down their required subsidy amount?
Well, maybe I'll, I'll jump in here. We did a feasibility analysis using MHP, that's Mass Housing Partnerships. They're a state agency or quasi-state agency. They helped us try to figure out whether or not this was a feasible project at the outset of the process. And they estimated that by keeping, by retaining the public parking, we would probably have a subsidy in the neighborhood of two million dollars. Now, that was, you know, three years ago. The subsidy that Two Life is is looking for is considerably more than that. And so that's where the committee started to feel like we don't have that much money in the housing trust fund right now. So we need to come to some sort of agreement. Housing, affordable housing financing does not allow you to use those monies to pay for parking as it as it shouldn't. But the warrant article required that we maintain the thirty-seven spaces. Town meeting approved that and the reoccurring theme that we heard from every single person who showed up for public comment and the public hearing that we we had was that all residents in that area have been affected by the lack of parking, and it is crucial that we maintain that lot. So we will have to figure out how to pay for that subsidy. As to how to bring the delta down, Two Life indicated in their interview that they have philanthropy, although that's going to require a lot on them. We will also have to figure out whether or not we have any money at our disposal. But given the current state of our budget, that's not likely, at least within the next fiscal year.
Any other questions from the board?
Another question, I just wanted to comment. I just, I hope people realize that Brookline has a pretty exceptional record, and Two Life is part of that. Benebrith, you know, also excellent, excellent candidate to do local development. But where Two Life is concerned, the development that they are, that is underway on Harvard Street at Tehilith Israel, I had the pleasure of attending the groundbreaking for that. Oh, gosh, I guess it was well over a year ago, but somebody would have to correct me if I'm wrong on that. And there were two officials from Mass Housing there who made a point of saying that they regard Brookline as the stellar example in the state for how Brookline brings together all of the various parties that need to be brought together for a development such as the one at Tehilith Israel and this one, which will come in the future. All of the various entities that have to come together, excuse me, in terms of the financing and other commitments. And Amy Scheckman, who happens to be the person in charge at Two Life, is a former Brookline Town Meeting member. So it's almost like it's a homegrown entity that, along with the good work of people in Brookline from HAB and, you know, housing. I'll get it straight. What is housing assistance bureau? What do we call it? Housing Advisory Board, thank you. I failed that test. But, you know, HAB and EDAB and other entities that had to bring bring off all of the complex interactions that go into a development such as this launching. Brookline really does it well, and I have great expectations for this next project.
Any other comments or questions?
I just want to second what John has said. Two Life is an excellent partner in development with the HAB. And, you know, I think we should approve this and move on with the process and let's see where we get. Obviously. You know, we don't know the answers, but and there are always uncertainties in these kinds of developments, but I think it's important to go ahead.
Okay, so the vote that is in the packet. It's a long vote, but I'll read it. I move that while it finds the Two Life and Benebrith proposals to be of high quality, the selection committee prefers Two Life while recognizing that its financial request is excessive and needs to be significantly reduced. The consensus of the selection committee is to authorize the town to enter into negotiations with Two Life to see if the town and Two Life can reach agreement on an appropriate subsidy amount in a mutually acceptable letter of intent. Strange vote, but I move approval. On favor, Mr. Heller?
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Van Scoia?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. And that's, you mentioned a few, a couple of votes. That's the only one I can see, Mr. Viola.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to note that that was the vote of the committees, that's the committee's recommendation recommendation to you, the board. There are three additional votes that we're asking you to take that'll actually lay out the process for, and I'm looking for them. They were including in this. They were included in the staff memorandum.
Okay, I see. On the next page. Yeah, there are three votes. I move that we authorize the Housing Advisory Board to form a Kent Street Negotiating Committee to be staffed by the Planning and Community Development Department to begin a process of negotiation with Two Life Communities for the purpose of determining whether the parties can reach agreement on a term sheet that lays out acceptable terms and conditions, including costs and subsidy level for the redevelopment of the Kent Street Parking Lot. Wow, that's about full. On favor, Ms. Heller?
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Van Scoia?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I move that the, I move approval of the of authorizing the negotiation, excuse me. I move the following. The negotiating committee shall consist of five individuals, no fewer than two of whom shall be current members of the Housing Advisory Board and no fewer than two of whom shall be members of the prior Kent Street Developer Evaluation Committee or the prior Kent/Station Street Affordable Senior Housing Committee. On favor of of that motion, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Van Scoia?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. And finally, I move approval of the following. Charge the negotiating committee to appear before the select board at the end of negotiations to report on the status of a term sheet to offer a recommendation on the designation of Two Life as site developer and to advise on the pursuit of next steps, including town meeting actions required for the disposition of the Kent Street Parking Lot for affordable senior housing. All in favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Van Scoia?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Is that it, Mr. Viola?
That's it. Thank you very much, and. That's it. Thank you very much, and we look forward to reporting back to you soon.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, what's next? Task force to reimagine policing in Brookline. So, uh, this is, um, uh, carryover from last week. And we asked Mr., um. Uh, Fernandez to revise his task force proposal. And then I was asked to come up, I think I was asked, or maybe I just did it. Uh, come up with a proposal for a, um. Uh, police reform, uh, committee or subcommittee. So we have, um. Two documents, uh, Mr. Fernandez's, uh, uh, document on reimagine. A task force on reimagining policing and a separate document that I prepared. Uh, for a committee on, um, police reform in Brookline. There's a lot of discussion, um, in the community about whether, you know, there should be two committees. Um, some people say yes, some people say no. Um, I guess the, the question to the board is whether you want to have. Um, uh, the, uh, reimagining task force as a one entity. And a committee on, um. Policing reform as another committee. Um. To address, uh, issues that are fairly straightforward and easy for us to, uh, to fix. Um, in terms of policies and procedures, um, you know, banning certain types of techniques. Uh, and maneuvers, um, and other, uh, sort of reform, uh, improvements to the police. To policing here in Brookline. Or whether you want, uh, that, uh, entity, that group to be a subcommittee of the. Task force on reimagining, uh, policing. So, um, with that sort of introduction, um. Let me hear from, first of all, Mr. Fernandez. What, what say you?
Sure, um, I, you know, I think this is now the fourth week. Uh, I believe what we're, we're discussing, um, this and, and, um. You know, issue for which that there needs to be some urgency. And so. I, I, I want us to make a decision tonight, also knowing that we're gonna take the next two weeks off of meeting. And we'll be meeting again, I believe, according to our schedule till August 11th. Um, I, I'd like for us to make a decision tonight. The, where we left off last Tuesday. I believe we, we finally, after three weeks of discussion, found a consensus on this board. The consensus was that we were going to split out the work of reforming and reimagining. Uh, and, and that, like you mentioned, uh, Chair Green, you've come up with a process. I've reviewed that process that you've come up with. Uh, it looks good to me. I'm curious to hear any public comment on, on that particular end of things. But it looks pretty good to me. Uh, I would just as soon have us build on our agreement from last week rather than starting all over again. And, and, uh, and having the same battles that we've had weeks on end. And just move forward with the consensus that we had at the end of last meeting. Have two different groups, uh, have them meet, as you mentioned, in your charge, meet jointly from time to time. To make sure that they're sharing information and, uh, and supporting the work of one another. And, and, and let's go, let's get this done. Um, that's what I'd love for us to do today. Um, I, I, otherwise I fear that we're gonna be here for another hour and a half or two hours or however long it takes. Hammering something out that, um, you know, and I'm, I'm not confident that we're gonna be able to reach the kind of consensus that we reached at the end of last meeting.
Right? And I don't want to be here on a separate day from the day we started.
I agree.
Now, by the way, I don't think that. I mean, e- either, if, if, if we go either way, I don't think it's really a difficult thing for us to. Come to an agreement on. For example, if. The decision is to. Be a subcommittee of the task force. I think the way I wrote that, all you really would have to do is to put that charge at the end of your charge. And, you know. Vote on that. It doesn't really need very many more changes than that. Uh, but, you know, that, that, you know, that's, that's one option. What, what do other people think? Let's, let's have a discussion.
Before this time, man, I just see, uh, we're gonna have to discuss that. I see drawbacks to that and I, I don't see any benefits. As opposed to, as opposed to having it as a separate group. So we're gonna end up having some, some deep divisions on this, I suspect, but. I'll, you know, curious to hear from others.
So I, I guess I'll be the first to jump in. Um, I don't recall it being consensus, uh, that we were going to divide. It into two separate groups at the end. It was something that was mentioned by the chair. Towards the end of the discussion and it was pretty late and we ended the meeting. I. I see serious drawbacks to dividing them. Um, I would rather. The reform be a subcommittee as was originally proposed, um, a Dr. Fernandez's original, original proposal. Um, I just, I, the drawbacks I see are that we have two groups doing work. And I, I fear that they will not communicate as much as we hope. Uh, it will require us to populate both groups with even more people. Um, and it will require double the amount of staff time. Um, so instead of finding efficiencies, we're basically doing two separate. Tasks at the, at the same time, when I believe there is efficiency to be reached. To have the same group, not only reviewing reform, but also reimagining activities.
Uh, I'll jump in here, um. You know, I know that at the end of the meeting, I was totally exhausted. It was way too late. It was like 11:30. And I said, let's just get it done and I'll agree to, uh, separate committees. But over the week I've thought about it. And I agree with, uh, select board member Hamilton that, um, it just doesn't really make sense. And I'd rather go back to Raul's, Dr. Fernandez's original, um, construction. And, uh, incorporate the two things. Uh, one hand will know much better what the other hand is doing because they'll be reporting back at meetings, et cetera. And I think that's just a way, and, and correct, totally correct about the staff time and. Uh, we don't have that luxury. So I think it's, it would be, it's a better model. You know, I think this is gonna be a tough. Thing to go, to get through. I mean, I, I think it's not gonna, it's gonna be, uh, a lot of, uh, time, no matter what you do. But I think it's better if it's, um, coordinated in a more seamless way.
Um, for folks who are watching.
Excuse me, um, by the way, I lost my connection again. I apologize.
Welcome back.
I'm back. Um, I, I missed some of that discussion, but go ahead.
Um. I wanted to say for those who are watching at home and who are kind of, uh. Wondering, uh, why is it so hard sometimes to, uh, get these things decided? Uh, you know, I'd make a couple of points and I'll use, um. I'll use, uh, select board member, uh, Fernandez's word from earlier in the meeting, messy. Um, you know, the process of finding consensus among five people some, sometimes is messy. Uh, and you're watching it happen in real time. Uh. There's also the famous, um, cliche, you know, uh, people should not watch. The legislative process or sausage being made. Um. This is kind of sausage being made. It's, um. It's not, uh, it's, it's not a neat process. Um, it starts with. A proposal that people need to. Think about, uh, people need to weigh. Then an alternative proposal is offered and people need to think about that and they need to weigh that. And I would be quite, uh, you know, blunt in saying this. The, um. The, the open meeting law that we have to operate under doesn't help. Uh, it would be so efficient. If, uh, between meetings, we could have discussions. We could negotiate, we could hammer out, um, agreements. We can't do any of that stuff. And so we're left to sort of wander. In between meetings, come back, start all over again. And try to find consensus where we didn't find it the week before. Without having had any advantage of working out some of the details of finding that consensus in between the meetings. And so if you like the open meeting process, then you have to like. What you see in terms of, of. How hard it is sometimes to come to a consensus on a decision of this nature. Um, I think we're there. Um. I'm looking forward to hearing, uh, select board member Hamilton's motion. And, um, hopefully there'll be a vote tonight that, um. You know, brings this to the next, the next step. Which is to launch the, uh, the operations of the task force, uh, and to get going.
Um, um. And Ms. Hamilton, could you tell me what your motion was? I was, uh, offline when, when you made it.
Uh, I haven't made it. Um, so I, I, I just, I think that we should go with, uh, Dr. Fernandez's original. Um. Charge that he offered several weeks ago. That lined, uh, reimagining and a subcommittee, uh, uh, that. Takes on reform.
Okay. Anyone else, uh?
Well, that, that proposal doesn't exist anymore and it's in, in that form. I mean, that proposal has been, has been changed and has been updated. Um, the, we, last week, literally, I rolled the tape. Uh. I, I told you what was gonna happen is that we're gonna bring forward, we decided that this was going to be. A proper reimagining committee and that the membership of that committee were going to be committed now. To the, to, to this. And that, I mean, it's all in there and, and what, what ended up in the, in the packet, it's in there. Um, and. Committing. Now we're talking about, uh, and, and you have to, you have to, excuse me, because I want to understand. What the proposal is now, because I don't think, no one can move anything because we don't even know what the proposal is yet. Are we talking about taking everything that the chair put together? Making it a subcommittee because what he put in there was membership. Are we talking about an additional 10 members? To this committee? Or are we talking about the, the eight members besides the chair and the advisory committee chair? Um, that would. Take on the work of reforming and reimagining with the understanding that those members are all committed to reimagining.
I, I think that this task force needs to be no more than eight or 10 people. So. With the changes that you made over the past week with the, you know, membership. I think that's the right direction we need to go. I just want to move us back towards reimagining and reform being part of this task force. That you would, you would be the chair. Um, Bernard would be, would have a role to serve. Um, I like the addition of the advisory committee chair. Um, so that, that's, uh, where I'm coming from. I, I'm taking. From what I saw you offer this past week and just trying to get us. So that we're all in the same room, listening to the same things. Because I think if we, if we keep going on two separate tracks. Um. It, it, it will be a disservice in the long run.
Okay, so, so since, um, Mr. Fernandez's, uh, proposal of three or four weeks ago is, is not on the table. What you're really saying is that, um. The policing reform. Thing should be a subcommittee of the task force. And in terms of the document, it just is the, you know, attached to the end. And I think we have, you know. Uh, we have what we're looking for. Now, the alternative is a separate committee. It sounds like you're not, you're not in favor of that.
I personally am not.
No, and, and Bernard, I'm not either. I think that you may have missed that, uh, when you were. Bandwidth problems.
Yep, okay. What do you think, Mr. Van Squire?
I'm okay with, with Raoul, Dr. Fernandez being the chair. And, uh, you know, I like the advisory committee's participation. I believe you should be on it as well. I think it's gonna have to be a little bigger than eight. I never thought eight was quite enough. Uh, because you, they've got a huge interest in this and, uh. You know, I, I wouldn't like it to be more. I think maybe the eight should be 12. And, and then we, in order to get an odd number, which we need. We should have, uh, Dr. Fernandez, advisory committee chair and, and, uh. Mr. Green is part of the committee and 12 other people. That would be my, that would be my recommendation. Because you're just not gonna be able to get the work done with so few people.
So Nancy, I'm sorry, what's your total?
My total would be 15.
15, okay.
That's a little high for me, but.
Okay, cut it down by two. Make it 10, make it 10 people plus the three. You know, uh, Raul, uh, Bernard and Mike or who. Advisory committee or designate.
So, so let, let me add, um, one other way of looking at this. Um, the way I view it, the membership of the task, the reimagining task force. Whatever number is actually gonna be different than the, um. Membership of the reform task force. I mean, I'm looking at the reform task force as being people with some.
We've lost him again.
We're losing you, Bernard.
Um. I hate this. Being from the reform. Okay.
Uh, oh, man, not working.
He might have to call back in.
Bernard, we're thinking you'll have to call back in.
So while we're waiting for, um, Chair Green to come back in, uh, Dr. Fernandez, I know you're kind of hearing a lot of this. For the first time, um, you know, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, I think one of the things that I. That I've tried to be clear on is that, um. What I think is needed is a task force that is committed. I, I, and, and you're, you're right, um, earlier on, um. Reform was part of that, and I think it can be again. I, I do part ways with the chair here in thinking that we're going to have. A totally separate membership now that just populates the subcommittee. Um, unless we're talking about bringing people in who are non-voting members, um, as a matter of that, you know, bringing in folks with expertise. But we already have, have that built in to the process. It's literally built into the, to the, um. The updated charge that I put together that talks about bringing in consultants with expertise. Um, so I'm not quite sure why we need another, another voting body as part of an already existing voting body.
That's, that wasn't my, um. Uh, what, what I was thinking either. I really think that it needs to be one body. Um, my, my frame of reference really is the override study committees that we've, um. Populated from time to time and, you know, trying to get every single conceivable skill set is impossible. You really need to get the people with the right kind of mindset. Uh, and then supplement with calling in experts, uh, to educate the members and be able to ask questions.
I mean, the other thing I was, I was saying is, you know, I, that I was thinking was, I was very excited about the possibility of having a committee that can just focus on the reimagining. I think. Um, you know, and if we're splitting it up into different subcommittees like the original proposal, um, I, I guess we can still. I mean, in a way, you know, things aren't operating all that differently, um, but, um. Anyway, I, I, I suppose it could work. Uh, I, I agree, um, with Nancy that, that probably adding a couple more members would be helpful to make it work.
Mm-hmm, but we would still, uh, oh, welcome back, Chair Green.
And we can see.
Not, not.
You're muted.
You're muted.
I'm back. Okay, I really apologize. And the problem, one problem is I can't hardwire this computer to the router. Because it doesn't have a connection, so I'll talk to IT about that. So, I don't know, was anyone talking? Or should I just go back to where I was?
Yeah, you were the one who was talking when you lost connection, so.
Well, we did say a few more things, mostly Heather and Raoul.
So the way I view these two committees, the reimagining committee is going to be composed of a different type of person than the reform committee. The reform group would be people with some expertise in the details of policing and, you know, what types of reforms, we can implement fairly quickly. The reimagining committee I see as people who are looking for, you know, bold ideas that, you know, aren't necessarily practical, but, you know, may give us, you know, some ideas and suggestions that could be made practical. Yeah, I see it as a committee of people who are looking for, maybe the long run, reimagining or long-run changes as opposed to, you know, some quick things we can do to correct some problems that we have in policing here in Brookline. So, I mean, I think that they're different and you know, I think that that concept can occur, whether it's a separate committee or whether it's just a subcommittee of the task force.
I mean, I think even if they were, whether or not they're subcommittees or two different committees, they would need to schedule around each other. They would rely on some of the same folks, like folks in the police department, you know, elsewhere in town. And so I don't see the same issues around efficiency necessarily, because either way, they're still gonna need to meet separately and those still meet jointly from time to time also. So I don't see the same concerns there. The concern that I see is having, is now mixing the membership of these two groups, instead of having one set membership for a task force, now we have two different memberships with, coming to it with two different purposes. And I wonder what that means when they come together as a full task force to then vote on issues like, you know, putting together bold proposals around reimagining, for instance, is having folks that might have been there for the reform but haven't bought into the idea around, again, creating proposals around reimagining. Those are some of the concerns that I have.
You'd have to convince, you know, the reform people, just like you'd have to convince the Select Board. So it's a way of making sure that the proposals are well-motivated, you know, with backup data and information.
So before we get too far down this road, I don't know how many other Select Board members are still interested in a separate task force on reform that's populated with a completely different slate.
Well, I've already said I'm not. I've already said that I believe that the subcommittee model is better. I know that Bernard is thinking about people who have some expertise, but that doesn't mean they can't come to the meetings and advise the subcommittee and help them craft reforms that, you know, that we could implement on a relatively quick basis. So I don't see that as an issue. I do, Raoul acknowledges, and I think that we're gonna need to expand anyway. I mean, I think the committee is, you know, this is only, you're talking about, first of all, you have a committee, the latest proposal is you have a committee of 10 people. Normally, you don't have that. You've got at least an odd number, so that you have, you know, always an odd number voting. Now, you know, I co-chair the Climate Action Committee, that is 15 people on it. And, you know, and all the vacancies, sometimes we have vacancies, but that hasn't been a serious issue. Occasionally, we've had quorum issues, but luckily, they've been on evenings when we haven't had a public hearing and we didn't have to have a vote and we could just, you know, have some open discussion. But, no, we, you know, so I've done it with small committees, I've done it with larger committees. I think, you know, it can work. And I think, given them, you know, you want a committee which has people who will contribute. And, you know, in some ways, that's really important. And to limit it, I think, I think it's, you know, that's why I suggested 12, the addition of Bernard as a member. The, I like Advisory Committee, I like Raoul as a Chair, and then that's three, and then 12 other members. If you want to make it 10 other members, I'm okay with that, but I don't think it's, you know, I don't think it's impossible, I really don't. And the Climate Action Committee has been around for many years, operating with 15 people, so I don't think it's impossible.
I'm sorry, John?
I think the subcommittee model can work. I mean, I've been part of the Advisory Committee, which, you know, breaks up their work into subcommittees. The subcommittees do their work, the subcommittees vote, and then the final decision is the full advisory committees. And in this case, it's actually much simpler. It's basically, you know, the Advisory Committee has anywhere from, I don't know, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 subcommittees, but this would be just two subcommittees, as I understand it. And I think you could deal with, excuse me, in terms of the vote before us, you could take what Select Board Member Fernandez has brought to the meeting tonight and simply add the language, "The task force will have two subcommittees, one focused on reform and the other on reimagining." And if that sounds familiar, it's actually from Select Board Member Fernandez's first proposal. And then you could further add, "The total membership of the task force shall be 13." And furthermore, the Select Board Chair will be a voting member of the task force and will chair the Reform Subcommittee. And Select Board Member Fernandez will be the Task Force Chair and will chair the Reimagining Subcommittee. That would work for me.
What do you think, Raoul?
Yeah, I've got no problem with that. I think the key was making sure that the, as long as we, if we're maintaining every other part of the charge, then I'm totally okay with that. I always thought it'd be good to work with you anyway, Bernard, on this stuff. And that we need to be doing the important work of reform as well as reimagining, so I've got no problem with that.
Let me just say that I don't mean to be a troublemaker here, but that proposal does dilute your membership. Because it's gonna have to have some sort of establishment type, if you want to use that word, experts to do some of the reform stuff.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, what what Mr. Van Schoeck just proposed did not mention changing what is written as the
Membership.
Now reads, "The membership of Brookline residents committed to reforming and reimagining Brookline's model of public safety." And it goes on with some more. It hasn't changed that, which is different than the membership that you'd come up with, Bernard, as part of your your otherwise, I think, good proposal for a group focused on reform, which is different, with the membership of that would be different. And that's, I think that's where we're talking around each other right now as to whether or not that the membership of the task force to reimagine, it's sort of the, that central commitment to reimagining will hold across the membership or whether it won't anymore. And if it holds across the membership, we're saying that all the members will still meet that criteria, that I'm okay with this as a subcommittee. If it won't, then I'm not.
Okay, I think that you can't preclude from membership for the reform part at least, people who, you know, are not, may not be committed to reimagining, rather they think that there are reforms, you know, maybe substantial reforms that are what we need.
That's why it doesn't matter if they were two different groups.
This is an issue for when we interview the potential candidates. I have no problem with the membership as outlined in the current proposal, where 50% are people of color. I think an LGBTQ person.
Women.
50% women. I think that's the direction to head in. I start to get a little uncomfortable with a membership above 10 members. I think with an advisory person, Dr. Fernandez and Chair Green, with 10 members, that's an odd number of voting people. Each one of the subcommittees would therefore have five or so members. I, just based on my own personal experience working with large groups and working with smaller groups, I would prefer the 10 to 15.
Do you mean a total of 10 with the two Select Board members and the Advisory Committee Chair or?
In addition, so 10 task force-appointed members. And then
Three.
And then the three.
Total of 13, okay.
I can live with that.
Yeah, I can live with that.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess that's the majority vote. Let me just throw out the other option that I think is still on the table, not still on the table, is out there. And that is, we vote the task force tonight as designed by Mr. Fernandez. And the reform piece, you know, we don't vote. Rather, you know, we just take responsibility for doing certain things that we learn about as Select Board members and Police Commissioners.
I don't agree with that.
Okay.
Sorry, Bernard.
Well, without any formal structure.
I think we'd be missing an opportunity to hear from some really, you know, top-level people.
Okay.
You know, we'll look at this, you know, the other thing I have to say is, I myself, I don't think we need to get too hung up on the meaning of the word "reimagining." We haven't really defined, you know, any kind of, to any degree of specificity, what is meant by that. And to me, reforming requires reimagining. And, you know, I think reimagining embraces reforming. So I just don't have any problem with the word "reimagining."
I just, like, I can't believe I'm hearing this, John. This is, it's been, how many, how much have we talked about this? It is, I've been as clear as possible, as much as I can with the board. I really do think I have, and if I haven't, call me, I don't know what to tell you. But the I'm interested, my proposal, which I'm happy to pull away and we can start over and come up with something else. But my proposal was focused on reimagining, I've been very clear about what that is. A distinctly alternative vision, but I don't even need to repeat it again. You all have heard it, he's said it a million times. And what I've said was, any attempts to undermine that, including through the appointments process, is not something that I'm at all comfortable with. The language has been updated after our last conversation to say, folks who are committed to the process around reimagining and also reforms in there as well, that that those are the folks that would populate this committee. If that is changing, then I view that as undermining the purpose of it, and I will retract it. That's, I have to draw a line somewhere for, like, you know, to maintain the integrity of the idea of reimagining and not have it get lost in this work of reform, the important work of reform, not have it get lost in that. I just, I gotta draw the line somewhere.
Yeah, I just don't get what I said that suggests that that's changing.
I don't mean to speak for John, but I think in his own way, he was trying to agree with you. Doesn't, I think there are some people that even reform is so outside the box that it takes reimagining.
I will say, but, 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 you talked about before is, we'll deal with it in the appointments process. I have to reject that and say, we have to be clear and definitive now about who we're interested in having apply to this thing. And what their commitment should be to, as written in the charge currently, to the process of reimagining. That's the essential element here, and I'm afraid that reform is now taking over this reimagining process. Let's just have it be two different groups that meet jointly that don't meet during the same time, so that it doesn't mean that staff can't be at both meetings, they're gonna have to meet separately anyway, even if they're subcommittees. And let, you know, I had no problems with what Bernard wrote out as the membership of the reform group, if it's just a reform, I've got no problems with it at all. I think it stands on its own, reimagining stands on its own, and then they interact with each other. I don't see what's wrong with that at all. I think that means the integrity of both processes.
And what I meant by the appointment process is that we have no control over who applies. We will turn no one away. And we will have to take each person on their own merits. And through the question and answer interview process, we will assess their commitment.
Well, we also, I mean, we can talk about this after we decide on a path forward, but we also have to decide if we get 100 applications or more, whether or not we're gonna interview 100 people or more.
Yeah, well, we'll weed them out, I mean, you always do that.
So I
Where are we?
I think we have three votes for whatever is proposed.
Okay, Devin, could you restate it?
Hold on.
We vote, I'm sorry, how about we vote on what we had on the table, everything else is coming afterwards. We have what we talked about last time. Bernard's presented a group around reform, I presented a group around reimagining. Why don't we vote on having those two be the groups that will, again, interact, engage with each other, like, share resources, all of that? If that fails, I've got some decisions to make, frankly.
Okay, by the way, we committed, you know, we committed to taking comments, so why don't we take comments before we even come up with anything? Hey, Devin, open up the comment line.
All right, the first person signed up for this comment period is Jeffrey Benson. Jeffrey, you've been promoted to a panelist, and when you're comfortable, you can unmute and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, can you see me? I can't see if I'm on yet.
We can hear you, but we cannot see you.
Okay, so hi, I'm Jeffrey Benson, precinct three. I want to support Raoul Fernandez's notion that you do these as two separate committees, because I think we do need a group of people who are committed to do reimagining and not reform. You guys are the Police Commissioners. You can do reform as your own separate committee, you can still do Bernard's committee. Do it as a subcommittee of the Select Board. Bernard, you can share that, you can put together whatever you want, and you can do the reforms, and that's your job as Police Commissioners. We need a separate committee to reimagine. And I want to support that fully, however you go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second person signed up for public comment is Amy Takano Mi.
Hi, again, Amy Takano Mi, precinct 10. I want to start off by expressing my frustration at the construction of this meeting agenda, whether it was intended or not, placing the task force at the end of the agenda. Whether it was intended or not, placing the task force at the end of the agenda severely reduces the number of people who can speak during public comment or hear your own comments on the subject. I think the fact that you feel compelled to designate a specific period of public comment specifically for this topic shows that you understand very well that this is a topic of great public interest. I think the construction of this agenda does not facilitate and encourage more public engagement with the subject, which I think we can all agree is not what we want to see happen. Regarding the task force itself, I only want to reiterate the thoughts that I've shared in the past previous three meetings. I support the task force to reimagine policing and only a task force to reimagine policing. The creation of a reform-based subcommittee within the task force to reimagine seems unnecessary at best and detrimental to the goals of the reimagining task force at worst. To be clear, if members of the select board feel strongly about pursuing the path of reform, I encourage them to create a task force dedicated to this end for the past, for the two task forces to remain in communication and would welcome hearing both of their proposals at the end of this process. But I see no good reason to force both paths to exist within the same task force unless the ultimate goal is to ensure that a task force dedicated to reimagining policing is never able to fulfill its function. I support a task force dedicated to reimagining policing, a task force that's genuinely critical of our current model of policing, that provides an alternative vision of community safety, and that sees divestment as its ultimate goal. If members of the select board feel different, I encourage them wholeheartedly to create another task force aimed solely towards reform. But I've heard no compelling reason to force these two distinct concepts to exist within the same body, and I feel strongly that if the select board insists on doing so, the only appropriate thing to do is to pull the task force entirely. Thank you.
That's an option.
Next person signed up is Marty Rosenthal.
Marty, speak.
Marty, you've been promoted to a panelist. There you go.
I had to do unmute, and I don't know where my video is, but you'll have to, trust me that I look the same as last week. So I was quite chagrined at the end of the last meeting by talk about the two separate committees. And I have been very excited about Raul's original idea about one combined committee. And I'm kind of sorry to hear that he's having doubt about that tonight. But as you know, the day after your last meeting, I immediately wrote one of my verbose emails suggesting that the two separate committees was a very bad idea, and I still feel that way. The main reason I think so frankly, I don't think has been mentioned. I don't see the point of discussing reforms without being in touch with the people that are talking about strictly reimagining. It, it just makes no sense to me. Oh, I see, start video. There I go. Here I am, I think. So I, I don't see how you can do the reform thing separate on a parallel path without being coordinated with the people more interested in reimagining. It makes zero sense. The first priority of this committee ought to be to have stuff ready for next spring, which is the budget process, which is how all of this started. And the only way to do that would be to do the two paths together with some coordination, with some dialogue. I actually, call me naive after all these years, I actually believe there's a possibility that these two groups could, could agree on some things. But, but there is no point to reimagining if it doesn't lead to change. And change is basically another word for reform. And I'd like to see the two, two, the two subcommittees talking to each other as they proceed. It seems to me that's what makes the most sense. You don't go into reform without knowing what your goals are. The goals have to be discussed in the context of reimagining, which I think is a wonderful concept to reimagine. And I'm sure there are things that could be changed in a big way, but there are some things that are very complicated, like patrol. That's a one-word function of police, but it's a huge issue. Do we have X number of sectors and X numbers of offices per sector 24/7? That's probably the biggest item in the budget. How do you discuss that without discussing the specific policies?
You have 30 seconds.
Yeah, thanks. I've, I've sent in a list of approximately, I think, 25 specific policies that need to be looked at, including things like patrol, including things like complaint procedures, including things like hiring, promoting, recruiting, civil service. These are all big topics, and that gets me to my last point, I think, which is I'm on a lot of big committees. The advisory committee's a good model. I was on it years ago. I'm on other committees. The PACS board is about 48 members. Talk about people that can be messy. I mean, that's a messy.
You've reached three minutes.
Yeah, so that is not a problem. I would suggest the 13 people. Because I think just the reform group ought to have at least five or six people. There's a lot of items for that group to talk about. So I don't think the size ought to be a, a big concern. And I think the whole thing ought to be under Raul. It ought to be his original notion of two subcommittees. And I, I think that Bernard's footnote is the way to go.
Thank you.
Next person signed up for comment is Josh Anyosa.
Thank you for having me again. This is the second time tonight. And, and again, thank you Devon for pronouncing my name really right. Somebody attempted it and they got it right.
Thanks.
You all should be happy that young people are out here very passionate about this topic. And regardless of how they come across, it shows that they really want to move forward. And I'm very, I'm very excited about the next generation. I want to see what they will do in 40 years. And I want to see what they do in 50 years, because they have so much passion for social justice and racial equality. And we should support that. And, and I, and I think relying on the status quo, when we say reimagining, and when we say we want safety for black people or people of color, we're not going to take safety away from white people. We're not going to make Brookline less safe. The only thing we're trying to do is treat us as humans. And also when police, like, if you walk down Nada, I live down the street from Nada, Nida, and there's like five police there, do they really need that amount of police just patrolling that area? There are things we have to look into and say, do we really need this amount of police responding to situations like this? I support Raul's agenda, I suppose, reimagining policing in Brookline. I think regardless that we are okay now, we want to be a model for the nation. The term Brookline is the most racist city or town in Massachusetts. We want to erase that. Want to make people feel welcome to come to Brookline. And all these semantics about reimagining and reforming, we want one goal. We want to change policing in Brookline. I want to make it, want to humanize people of color in Brookline. And I, and I think we should get this started. I think tonight we should vote for it and let's move on. I'm glad to play my part in this big role. It is a bold move. You know, things happen after bold moves. And I am really, really excited, although I'm sad with everything that happened with George Floyd and how our nation has done.
You have 30 seconds.
That my daughter has been very good public speaker. She's been advocating for everything. Young ones are coming out in droves, and they understand, they know what is at stake. And we should support them. We should water them and encourage this behavior.
Thank you. Mr. Anyosa, with all due respect, I do have to comment on the idea that Brookline is the most racist town in, in Massachusetts. I think that you need to travel around Massachusetts a little bit. And to think that Brookline is anywhere near that is, is just not, not, not an acceptable opinion to have.
But, but it's my folks. You know, when I tell them I live in Brookline, they go like, what? You survive in Brookline? It is what they have, what they say, and we, we shouldn't settle for less.
No, you shouldn't, and you shouldn't ignore that, but, but let, let's try to look at, at the reality.
The next person signed up for public comment is Ryan Black.
Hi folks, just curious, like, y'all ever considered doing these meetings like two days a week? That way you're not all up till like 12 AM each day? Seems like it'd be easier for you and everyone. Right, and just a suggestion I'm throwing out. But anyway, I, I want to, I would like to ask the select board to make the task force squarely about reimagining. If you want to do a task force about reform too, that's fine. I mean, if it's true groups, it seems perfectly feasible for them to actively talk to each other. It's only two. Say Dr. Fernandez is leading a reimagining work, Chair Green is leading a reform work. I imagine you two talk frequently each other, where it'd be easy enough to keep good tabs on what the other group is doing. But I think the select board needs to be honest with themselves, that like four of you just have a different understanding of an approach to this issue than Dr. Fernandez. If you don't want this task force to be messy and bogged down in endless debate, then what you need is a body that's entirely committed in its mission and membership to the idea of reimagining. I mean, let's be frank, many of the folks most passionate about reform simply think to some of the reimagining proposals or some of the potential reimagining proposals would just be too bold of a measure. Like, they think the status quo is, if not fine, it's well enough, but like, they just don't want to change things too, too boldly. And so, but the whole point of a task force like this is to come up with ideas, not to make decisions that's come up, you know, in many times the past several weeks. And it seems to me if you want ideas that are meant to be as bold and imaginative as possible, even if it's just to spark debate, and I hope it's not just to spark debate, like, like, as Dr. Fernandez said last week, just because something's bold and imaginative doesn't mean it's not practical. But if you, if you want this task force idea to be as bold and imaginative as possible, then all of the task force members need to be on board for the same mission. And the mission of reimagining policing and public safety is, soon as you add people who only want to go as far as reform to a task force that's about reimagining public safety, well, then you don't have people or a task force committed to reimagining public safety, do you? So, I mean, like, I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person signed up for public comment is Debra Brown.
Good evening again. I, I as well support Raul's position on, you know, one task force focusing on reimagining policing. If you can't do that, you know, I'm in a place where I have to ask, how serious are we? I see this as an opportunity for the town, and I, and I, I would like to think that a majority of the select board does. Presently, the process is dragged on, and I think it makes the entire town look bad. We're in week three. What is the fear? We, I, 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 I think there is no downside to trusting Raul. And to trust that your residents will make decisions that both reimagine and that are achievable. Even the Senate and House have come up with legislation, and they're starting, you know, their reconciliation process on a more mundane level. I, I'd like to see more language in there. I know, I'd like to see language that talks about, you know, really gets to looking at structural racism, you know, clearly stating the need to, you know, a civilian review board. I think 15 members may be necessary. And I, I think that most of the members should be people of color, African American, Latino, and other historically marginalized people. I do not think that white women should be given any preference for purposes of serving on this board, because white women have not been impacted in the same way by policing that people of color LGBT have. So I don't know what your big fear is. You know, I, I really think that if you trust us and, 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 and move away from ideas like bold ideas that are impractical. You know, move away from, you know, language, you know, like vigilantes, which almost reminds me of a script coming really close to saying that if we do too much, you know, Willie Horton is gonna show up in town.
You have 30 seconds.
We don't need to go there. I think that we have a community of, of, of smart, gifted, generous people, and we should trust that that's who we are. And support reimagining, public safety, and, and be really proud of what we come up with. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Susan Park.
Hi again. I mean, I, yeah, I totally support Ra- Ra- Dr. Fernandez's initial idea of a reimagining and reform committee. However, after listening to, you know, the select board talk and debate, I'm thinking, you know, what's the point of all of this? And that's, you know, we want to better how minorities and African Americans are treated by the police. And that's gonna take an awful lot of work. And I, I'm thinking more that from a practical standpoint, you just need a lot, you're gonna need a lot of people, a lot of good, smart people to come together. And so for that reason, just listening to you all, I was thinking, what if, what if Chair Bernard chaired the reform group? And Raul chaired the reimagining group, each with 11 groups. You know, one select board member on each, and then there's an advisory committee member that floats. And because like, any way you look at it, I mean, you want this to be really effective and you want it to be thorough work. So it's, it's gonna take a lot of people. And so for that reason, I mean, I, I totally support Dr. Fernandez's idea for reform and reimagine. But, you know, I, I feel like one group, it's just, it's gonna, I feel like there's not enough people. Because I've been, I've been in committees where there were like 30 of us, and it took all 30 of us to do this grandiose job. So th- those are my two cents.
Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Paul Warren. Paul, you've been promoted. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. Paul Warren, precinct one, member of the advisory committee. It has been quite an interesting process to watch you make sausage. Thank you for the analogy, John. Making sausage quite the same way again. I, I want to just take a step back and provide some context, how we got here. Shortly after the very disturbing events with, that happened nationally with, with the deaths in the community, very troubling, we quickly moved to try to defund the police without a single budget hearing. 2.8 million was the top end, 1.8 million was on the low end, without a single public input from the community. That ended up being voted down substantially at town meeting. And during that conversation at town meeting, this concept, which we didn't see the proposal until after town meeting was made, was to have a, 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 a task force to relook at what was being proposed. And what was being proposed was money being moved into public housing, money being moved into the schools, money being moved into other departments to handle, how do you handle a domestic abuse call? How do you handle parking? How do you handle mental health services? Those are the types of things. And then also the other issues about people being stuck in Brookline at a higher rate if they're a person of color. Certainly very, very problematic. I don't understand why we're so stuck right now. I re- I really can't understand. I mean, I, I'll tell you, I disagree with Debra, that we're making Brookline look bad, being thoughtful through this process. Brookline looks bad when you go to cut the budget 2.8 million without a single, you know, hearing. That makes us look bad. We look bad when we lose a very progressive police chief. You know, how many conversations have we had about that? A very progressive police chief, well-respected in the community and by the people that work for him and for the people that he works for, and he's gone, and we lost him. How are we gonna get another police chief? You know, people are looking at Brookline going, what? You know, people are looking at Brookline going, what the hell is going on is what they're doing. So, I just, you know, I'd like to close and say, I don't support two separate task forces. I don't, I don't understand why that needs to be done. I've done a lot of ideation, Raul. I've led, you know, fortune class companies and idea generation. You can do both. You can have a subcommittee with people that are only going to do ideation around the concepts that you're talking about. Have a subcommittee that talks about reform and it all inputs up into a single task force. To have two separate threads makes absolutely no sense. And I don't agree with many things that Martin Rosenthal says, but I'm a hundred percent lockstep with him. He's got it right. This should not be two separate task forces. It should be one. You should provide leadership, start meeting together and stop being separate. You know, I, I, I'm going to have to vote on the product of this. I don't feel good about it right now, guys.
You've reached your three minutes.
So, I was just pleased to ask, consolidate your efforts. Please lead together, one task force. If Raul's the chair, Raul's the chair. Two subcommittees, bring it together and start leading us out of this instead of this, this, you know, constantly back and forth. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
The next person is Honeys there? You've been promoted to a panelist and you can unmute. Hi, you just need to unmute?
I can hear myself fine, but now you can hear me too?
We can.
Okay. So, I, there's two or three things that I wanted to mention. First of all, I feel like Raul is not happy with the idea of combining these two into one big committee and having reform be a part of the reimagining. And I think it's really important that he be able to achieve his original vision of something dramatic and reimagining. And if that's, if that's the way he would be most comfortable, I really wanted to see him be able to achieve it in that way. I do think that also, as Ms. Park said, it's better to have a slightly bigger committee. There's huge interest here in this and also there are a lot of things that need to be done and not every person will probably be at every single meeting. So I do think I would go with the twelve plus three for fifteen, so that it could, you know, bring in more of the people who would really like to be involved and are excited about this. I think it's a very exciting project and a lot of people will want to be involved. But the other thing, I, I do think there's this need later, if there is going to be some sort of a reform project, to make sure that there is a way, after the reimagining is done, to bring this into a place where it can actually be realized in real life and in, in the real town of Brookline. So, I don't think we've quite figured out how that's going to happen. This reimagining part is important and we have to try the very best ideas to make this really important change. And then we'll have to figure out how to bring this into reality and make some of these things stick and make some of these things be possible, actually. So, I think maybe that is to be figured out in the future, but I think we should be sure to have a strong reimagining. And if that requires a, one single committee to do that properly, then I want to support Raul in this. That, that's all I really had to say about it. I think it's such an important concept and it's, we really have to follow through with it.
Thank you.
Next person signed up is Eddie Strompholz. Eddie, you've been promoted to a panelist and can unmute?
Hi. So I just want to note very briefly that I believe it's important to note what has occurred to this proposal since it was introduced and the culmination of an effort that we're seeing tonight. Frankly, what we've seen is that the majority of the members of this select board are hostile to the principles of a reimagining police, but feel it would reflect poorly on them to oppose the creation of this task force outright. Realizing that they could not stop the creation of this task force, but principally opposed to the idea of reimagining police, these members have instead worked to rob the ability of this task force to meaningfully engage with the idea of and possibilities contained within reimagine. The manner in which everybody tonight has suddenly remembered Raul's original proposal, presented as if Raul isn't literally sitting here right now telling you he does not support this idea, illustrates the intention and coordination behind this effort. This is the only reason that we've seen all the hostility to the creation of two committees. Also to quickly note, any police chief who resigns because the people he's supposed to serve have given voice to the pain they have suffered is not progressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that is the end of our public comment on this item.
Okay, so let's get back to, to our discussion. Where are we? Where do you think we are, Raul?
I, I would, just, I would like to propose that we vote on the, the charge of the reimagining task force as included in your packet with the, with the change that of adding two more members from eight to ten and only that change. And that we vote on separately, something I support, which is a, a separate task force or committee focused on reform as outlined exactly as, as Chair Green put it together.
Okay. Ms. Heller, you, not, no, Heather, you had an alternative proposal. Why don't you outline that? In light of our discussion with the public, to the extent that, you know, that, that's useful.
Well, I, I think it's important to take this vote first. But if it should fail, then I think a proposal that mirrors Dr. Fernandez's proposal, but adds the language back in from a previous proposal, that there shall be a subcommittee of the reimagining to look at reform, same membership, bump it to ten. So that would be the, the proposal.
Okay, so what's the first vote on what?
First vote would be on, I mean, I don't know, Bernard, do you still, in this first vote, do you want to include the separate committee on reform or not?
No, I think your proposal was to just vote on what was in the agenda. And I think
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I think that's what Heather is saying too. Am I wrong there, Heather?
Yes, so I, what I would be more comfortable with is language that reform would be a subcommittee to the reimagining task force.
I'm just going to go ahead and, and say that, that's not something that I'm going to support. At this point, here's where I am. We can have an up or down vote on the, the, the reimagining committee, a task force, as it is in the packet with the, again, with the only change being eight to ten members. If, if that fails, I'll just tell you right now, and I'm not trying to hold anyone hostage. I just want to let you know where, what's going to happen is, I'm going to go ahead and take my language, I'm going to pull it away. If others would like to present an alternative proposal, they can do the work as I have for the past seven weeks, working on this and last four weeks through this, through the select board, and they can write their own charge. But I'm going to pull the language and that's, and that's it. I mean, this, enough is enough. We're four weeks into this at this point. I'm done. So, let's call it up or down and then, yeah.
Well, if, if I may, I, I just want to respond to, to one thing. I think that would be a real shame. And it, it's frustrating, I think for all of us, that right now, we don't even know who's applying and, and who would populate this committee. So all of this, in my opinion, is conjecture about the commitment level about reimagining. Until we have real people that we're interviewing and we understand what's motivating them to apply for this committee and to participate. For me, it's about who gets on this task force. And I think that there are absolutely the right combination of folks with the charge that's been proposed, that can look at both of these items. And I just have a different way of looking at it, that reform is fundamental to be able to understand what reimagining would look like. Civil service is one of the biggest issues that we're going to need to tackle. And does that fall under reimagining or reform? Depending on how you look at it, it could fall into either. Parking enforcement, traffic stops, is that reform or is that reimagining? It really depends on where this committee takes it. So I would ask you to respectfully reconsider, I think, your original proposal with the added changes about membership of people of color, fifty percent female, are great additions and I would like to see it commence.
I appreciate that. I, I think where we are now, Heather, unfortunately, is that for weeks, folks have tried to undermine this effort. Remember just, it was, it was a short time ago that, that there was a debate about whether or not I should be chair. All of a sudden, folks have decided it'd be a great idea if I was chair, it'd be the best idea ever if I was chair, right? On my, you know, folks have tried to undermine this every
No, I don't think we're, anyone's undermining, but go ahead.
There are folks who have tried to undermine this every step of the way. I'm, I'm not going to be gaslighting.
Maybe not on this board, but you, okay, I, I'll take that.
And, and, and I, I just, this is it. The folks who are supporting this wholeheartedly want a task force focused on reimagining. I don't see why having a separate task force, as I've explained, if they're going to be a subcommittee anyway, they're going to meet at different times, they're going to end up using the same resources separately. There's no, there's no good, and, and the idea that the chair and I can't communicate or that we as a board can't provide direction as needed on things like civil service and other things, I just don't get it. I don't understand it. I, I, you know, I, you know, I, I just, that's it. I'm done. I, I
I don't think you should say you're done, but I, I, it is important to emphasize that the idea that Raul and I cannot work together is, is just fallacious. You know, I think we can work together. We'll disagree, you know, but, you know, and, and, you know, he has his background, I have my background and we respect that. And, you know, our disagreements don't have to be disagreeable. They may be intense and hot, but, you know, we'll come to, we'll come to a conclusion because I think we both, you know, are serious enough to know that, you know, whatever we do in this town, it, it has to be for the benefit of the town. And, you know, now what that means, you know, is of course up for discussion, but I don't think that that's a, a breaking point. Okay, so I think, you know, what, what's on the table is the, is Raul's proposal that was put in the packet. And I guess there's an amendment to that by, by Heather. And how, what goes first? The amendment or the original? I guess the amendment has to be voted first, is that correct?
Yes.
Who, who's the, okay, parliamentarian?
That's how, that's how Sandy Gatsby does it, so.
Okay.
But let me just say this, I, I, I want to say that I am not opposed to reimagining. If anyone thinks that, it's, that's just incorrect. And I look forward to hearing ideas, bold ideas and ideas from other places, which, you know, this charge talks about. So, I just, you know, I, I don't agree with that characterization and I want to make that clear. I also don't agree with the characterization that I have always wanted Raul to be chair. I thought it would be better to have Bernard as co-chair, but I'll give that up. And, you know, if that's offensive to people, I'll give it up. I do think
Why would anyone be offended by me?
I, I don't know. I don't know. I'm not offended by you and I don't know, but, you know, I think it's fine. I think it, you know, but I do think that Bernard should be on the committee. I think he's going to be attending anyway, but I think he needs to lead the reform piece. And, you know, that, yeah, that's what I think, anyway. So let me just say that.
Okay. Unfortunately, the, the parliamentary process involves first voting on amendment to the main motion, which is Mr. Fernandez's motion. Is that right? Okay. Ms. Heller said that's right. I assume it is.
Well, I'm basing it on, on Sandy's parliamentarianism, so.
Okay. So, all in favor of, I guess, Heather's vote or Heather's motion is to make, create a reform subcommittee in the reimagining task force. Is that, is that correct? Is that accurate?
True, a- after the tweak of ten members as opposed to eight.
Okay, now you're making it complicated. Okay. All in favor of that? Ms. Heller?
Yes, aye.
Okay. Mr. Fernandez?
No.
No. Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Hal- Ms. Hamilton, I missed you.
Aye.
It's getting late. Mr. Fernandez, no. Mr. Van Skoyak, you're the critical vote.
Aye.
No, no. Okay, chair votes no. I don't know where we go from here.
We have to vote on it as amended, don't we? Bernard?
Yeah, I guess we have to vote on it as amended unless Mr. Fernandez, I don't know.
I, I, I was, I wasn't kidding. That's it. I'm done. I, you know, I'll sit as a member of this board and, 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 and look at whatever recommendations come forward, but I was very clear, I thought before we took that vote and I wasn't kidding. And that's it. You know, I, we had a real opportunity here to create something that I think would provide an opportunity for members of our community that, that think that we need more than just mere reforms, that we need to be able to, at the very least, present proposals for an alternative vision, many meaningful changes to our current model of the public safety. I, I, I couldn't have been more clear about that. You know, this was a real opportunity for us to do that and, and as I mentioned, you know, sort of the entire dialogue about this over the last four weeks has, 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 whether or not people are doing it intentionally, I know some have, has, has worked to undermine that very purpose.
Okay.
And then so I'm, I'm, I, I can't be part of that. I can't lend
Okay, we, we got it.
If I could take a few more seconds and, and I might, on this, I've worked a long time on this and I know you have too. I'm, I'm not going to allow the undermining of this process. I'm not going to lend my own legitimacy to it. I'm sorry, I cannot participate.
Okay. I, I think it's unfortunate how you characterize some of this, but I'd like the board to think about whether we can come out of this meeting without a reimagining task force. You know, in my view, that, that is something that's bare minimum we need to, to come out of this with. And if that's all we get, I think that's good enough because we have the power as board members to do the reform stuff without a committee or to set up another committee later on down the line. So, I don't know what the parliamentary procedure is here, but if, if anyone would like to reconsider the vote, I'd like to give people an opportunity now. Because we can't, we can't come out of this meeting with, without, you know, some step towards reimagining task force.
We, we can have a reimagining task force. We can have a task force that does reform and reimagining in one. And I'm perfectly happy with all of this language. I mean, basically what Raul is saying is that, you know, he doesn't want to be chair. And okay,
He doesn't want to be part of it.
Okay, he doesn't want to be, you know, I, I, we can't help that. I mean, he, if he doesn't want to, he doesn't want to. Then, you know, we're going to end up relying on you, Bernard, because you're the one who has the
Yeah.
Interest and the expertise on this board. So, you know, I think we should just go ahead and vote it and I think we should just go ahead and vote it and, uh, you know, uh, if Raul does not want to be, do, do you not even want to be a voting member, Raul?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and by the way, uh, you know, look, I mean, I, I, I support the idea of reimagining, but that is not where I'm coming from. I think that we can get some good ideas from, you know, looking at bold solutions from other, uh, parts of the world, other parts of the country. Um, I, I just don't see, um, the implementation of those in, in Brookline as something that, uh, is, is really my, um, the fire in my gut. I think Raul is really the person we needed to do that. You know, he's an academics and then that, that means something, uh, in terms of, you know, uh, you know, how he would, uh, uh, structure the research and, and, and the evaluation of, of, uh, uh, proposals. So I think, you know, without him, you know, we, we really don't have anything and, and we don't have much credibility in the community, at least among certain segments of the community who, who, who may be, uh, a real pain in the tacos, but, uh, you know, still are, are second, are people we need to, um, uh, listen to, at least when, you know, with respect to general ideas, uh, uh, regarding this, this, this issue. So.
I, I just want to say I, I, I want Raul to be the chair of the reimagining task force. On the other hand, I have to say, uh, with all due respect, uh, select board member Fernandez, you've put us in an, almost an impossible position. Every word that has been voted is your words. And now you're saying you've changed your thinking, which is fine, about what you proposed three weeks ago. And without our agreeing to your change in thinking, you refuse, you will decline to be chair. And you've put us in the position of basically having to submit to an ultimatum, um, as to who should be chair of the task force, when every word that we voted in the creation of the task force came from you. I, I just think, you know, do, do you think that's a reasonable, uh, demand, uh, ultimatum to deliver to your fellow select board members? Do, uh, do you? I, 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 I think you need time to think it over.
Don't, John. And, um, I, uh, you know, I, well, we've been through this. We've been through the paces on this. I know that the chair is done here and for me on this. Um, I, I don't, I don't see the need to subject myself to your line of questioning.
Okay. Wait a minute. Okay. Well, look, um, is, we, we, we have, um, I guess we have to take a vote, uh, uh, on the amended main motion. Is that still, um, the, the, a desire of the board?
Well, we, we voted the language. So the charge stands as far as I know.
Okay.
We could move, I think reconsideration.
Well, I, I thought I asked if people want to reconsider. And no one, no one said they did. So. I, I, I recommend that we, um, uh, we, we vote no action on, on any of this until we, we sort of get our act together, um, and, and can move forward. Cause I don't think we're really at a point now where we have anything that's viable. Uh, the idea of, uh, pushing, uh, a, a task force composed of two subcommittees down Raul's throat, even though that was what he originally, um, you know, gave us, uh, is, is not, is not viable. Um, so. I mean, we, we vote, we voted a, a task force with two subcommittees, um, but we don't have a chair for that task force. And I think without Raul as, as chair, it's, it's, it's not really a viable, uh, it's, it's not really something we should do.
If it's not, uh, out of order, could I ask select board member Fernandez to frame this in a, in, in, in a way that would be acceptable? And that recognizes that there are those among us who feel this should be part of one, one unified effort?
I've done that multiple times in this conversation that just occurred. I've done exactly that. I, I'm, I'm, I've done that. Um, and I don't know how, how else I could say it in a different way that would make a difference.
Okay. I move no action. Which actually I guess means reconsideration of our previous vote and voting on no action. I, I think we're in an impasse.
I have a suggestion. Can, can we let, you know, it's already 11 o'clock. We're getting ourselves into the same, you know, problem we had last time and, uh, it's late. And, um, I think we should, um, uh, table this for now. Table it, any further discussion, leave the vote where it is and, uh, reconsider the whole thing next time. And, you know, we have to move forward somehow. We have to, uh, we have to both reimagine and reform and we got to do it somehow. So, uh, I don't know.
Well, uh, I, I don't know whether this is, uh, going to meet within the satisfaction of anybody on the board, but what, what if, um, the proposal were to, uh, appoint 10 members to do the work of reimagining and reforming the Brookline Police. And to assign, uh, five of those members to a committee chaired by Raul on reimagining. And to assign five of those members to a committee chaired by, uh, Bernard Green on reform. Um, on the stipulation that the recommendations to be made to the select board as a whole, come from a vote of the joint committee on reimagining and the committee on, uh, reform.
I don't see how that is, is, is any improvement and, but I don't see how that's workable.
What, what part of it would not be workable?
Well, it's, it's basically, um, Heather's proposal with, with a few slight, uh, with a few variation, a few differences. And we still have the problem that we have a select board member who doesn't want to work with, with something like that.
Well, except it, it does assign
He's the key person.
It does assign the committee to, to do its own work under his chairmanship, independent of the work of the, of the reform committee. Like I said, it probably won't get support from anybody.
Yeah.
But I thought, I'm, I'm just trying to help people to think a little differently so that we don't end up, uh, with a meeting ending without a result.
Yeah. But I think that's where we are and it's 11 o'clock and, and, um,
I appreciate your effort, John, but I, you know, I, at 11 o'clock, I'm just done, you know? It's really hard for me to think about this, you know? And, uh,
I'm hungry and thirsty.
What? No, no, no. I mean, you know, so it, that, you know, I think that's why I, I, I need to let it, you know, percolate.
I mean, we, we have, we have a, a vote on, that, uh, has been made. You know, or a proposal that is, that has been voted. Um, it's, uh, as a practical matter, not a viable proposal because Raul is not willing to go along with it. But it is what it is. Uh, and why don't we just, uh, move on and see if we, uh, come up with some solutions, uh, uh, next time around? I mean, I, I just don't see any way around, uh, you know, any other alternative. Raul, do you see any other alternative? Does anyone else?
No, not right, not at 11 o'clock at night.
I, I may be able to come around to separating them two, but, uh, not tonight.
Okay. Okay. So let's move on to our next item. We're not finished yet. Sanctuary license. Oh God, this is, uh, this is not a, this is not a short item. Uh, discussion and possible vote on the amended license conditions, the new manager Jane for Sanctuary Medicinal. See, Mr. Allen is, is, uh,
I'm still here.
This, uh, last, last week, um, I believe that there are a couple of people who would like to make some comments through our chat, uh, function and my internet connection is getting weak now. So let me get off of, uh, get off of the, uh, video. So, uh, I see Mr. Morelli is there. Tell us what you think you, we ought to do. We, we've already had the hearing on the, on the, um, conditions. Uh, we've talked about the conditions. I think at a certain level, all we need to do is, is vote. But, uh, I would like to, you know, get some update in terms of, uh, yesterday's meeting, uh, and anything else that, uh, is, would be important for us to, to know.
Who do you want? Maria or want Maria to go ahead?
Why don't we start with Maria and then she can ask you to, to chime in?
Thank you.
Okay. So just there are three things.
And I do have a question for Patty, but, uh,
Okay. Um, so, so very quickly, um, you did review the, the conditions. They were recently amended to be more in line with conditions that were added to NEDA's annual, um, annual renewal. Uh, and that's namely, uh, the hours of operation, the introduction of a site plan review that would be done on an, on an annual basis. Um, and then there were updates that had to reflect COVID-19 procedures. So those are, that basically sums up the amendments, uh, to the conditions. There's also a change of manager, uh, that's before you tonight. Um, and also we can update you on the, um, the event that was, that was hosted by Sanctuary Medicinals, uh, yesterday evening with the community.
Okay. Well, what, do that.
Okay. So, um, I, I attended that, um, as member of the planning department along with Lieutenant Paul Cullenane, who was the other, uh, staff member, um, who was there. It was hosted by, um, Mr. David Kimball, uh, Kimmel, who is the director of business development for Sanctuary Medicinals. There were about 25 attendees and I, I would say that it was very, uh, well organized. Um, they were very thoughtful questions. Um, the community has really put a lot of thought into, um, you know, this, and there were a range of questions, I mean, from parents, uh, business members, uh, community members. And I thought that Mr. Kimmel, uh, answered everything comprehensively and, and thoughtfully. If you have any more questions, I did send you a report that basically summarized all the questions that were posed yesterday evening.
We received that. Um, any, uh, questions from the board of, uh, um, Ms. Morelli or Mr. Allen, uh, or any, or Jamie Zavalo? Do you have anything to add, um, Ellen? I'm sorry.
No.
Yeah. Well, why, why don't we let, um, um, Mr. Allen, Jeffrey Allen, um, add anything before we go into questions?
I, I just want to say that we had what I thought was a very constructive, uh, well-attended community meeting last night and we're, we're, we have no objection to any of, uh, the conditions that, uh, town council has recommended to amend the license. They're prepared, uh, to agree to everything and we're ready to open August 1st at 10 o'clock.
Okay. Um, we have a question regarding, um, the, uh, person that you have, um, uh, selected as I think the, one of the managers. What, what, what is, what would, will be his duties specifically with respect to, uh, teens, which is apparently something he mentioned, uh, at the meeting.
That, that is not a manager. That's our community relations director.
Okay. Okay. So, so it, I, it, so it sounds like he would probably be interacting with, uh, teenagers, uh, to discourage them from participating or, or, uh, using marijuana. Wha- what, what would his job be?
Former director of the Brookline Teen Center. So he has a relationship with the teens, but he's going to be reaching out to the community in general. If at some point someone in the community thinks he can serve a role in reaching out to high school or students or so forth, we will make him available and, and, and that's where he has an expertise in this. But he's going to reach out to all facets of, of the community.
Yeah. Okay. I think, uh, maybe there's
Tonight too.
Okay. I think maybe there's a, a misunderstanding as to, um, something he said. Uh, would, would, uh, Mr. Shaw, would you like to add anything to that?
Actually, it was, um, myself, David Kimmel, who made that comment.
Okay.
Uh, and I would like to echo, uh, Jeffrey Allen's, uh, statement that, uh, first, we're very pleased to have Mr. Shaw as part of our team. And his responsibilities will focus on community outreach. That would include the Coolidge Corner residents, the Coolidge Corner merchants, of course, the town of Brookline and the Brookline Police Department. Additionally, and if appropriately invited, Mr. Shaw would be pleased to speak to interested parties, including teenagers, senior citizens, or anyone in between that age group or groups regarding the risks and the concerns associated with cannabis use.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That's, that was important.
Thank you.
There's another question. Um, uh, will Sanctuary be required to come back to the select board in order to stop using reserve ahead and pre-order? Ms. Morelli, would you like to answer that?
Certainly. So just to for background of the basis of the special permit did, and the license did allow for walk-ins. Um, staff in reviewing the opening plans since they are reopening during the state of emergency, uh, staff did stipulate that to maintain social distancing safely, that there could only be a reserve ahead, um, sales model and that this is, is in effect for phase three. When phase four switches on, the so, the Sanctuary does need to come back to staff because we will see if there are different, whatever state guidelines come down at that point, we want to ensure that operations reflect that as well as our own health commissioners', um, guidelines. So we have no way of seeing in for phase four, what those conditions will be.
But they, it, it, it wouldn't be necessary for, for them to come back to the select board, but the select board could step in and, and, um,
I beg your pardon. I'm sorry, Mr. Green. Your, that was your question. Uh, they would be coming to staff and in turn we would both, both parties would be reporting to the select board.
Okay. Good.
Okay. That, that was the question.
That was, that was the question.
Oh, I'm getting a lot of feedback here. Sorry.
Sorry.
I don't know what the problem is. I'll try to fix it, but, oh, maybe it's fixed. That was going to be my question for Patty. I don't, you know, I, uh, don't have the, my eyesight isn't great in the past couple of days, so I couldn't find, uh, reserve ahead in, I, I didn't find it in the language and I wanted to make sure that they're going to come back because I do think we may learn a lot about how the, um, the, uh, marijuana facilities, um, operate and, and, uh, interact with, uh, the environment that they're in.
If I may, I could read condition 26. Uh, I won't read the whole thing, but, uh, just what is of interest to both of you. So at the very end, prior to opening the licensee, she still, she'll, okay, sorry about that. Um, before implementing provisions of the state's COVID-19 reopening plan for phase four, the license licensee shall submit to the town a phase four operations plan for review and approval of relevant town departments and for presentation to the select board. This, the phase four operations plan shall incorporate COVID-19 procedures consistent with the state's requirements for phase four.
Okay. So it's embedded in there is what you're saying?
Correct.
And Mr. Allen, you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I agree. I, I agree. Since we don't know what Phase 4 regulations are going to be, we really can't talk about it. But we, when we do know, we're going to work with staff, and whatever we, we propose will end up before the select board.
Okay.
But hopefully not at 11:30 at night. And we also have before you, Mr. Chairman, tonight, the approval of our managers.
Right. Any other questions before the select board or from the select board? And I'm sorry.
Could someone just let me know, has a commitment been made to a additional community meeting after opening?
Yes, last, last night, we committed that somewhere in the vicinity of three to four weeks after we opened, we'd have another community meeting so that we could actually have a community meeting that could be based on the experience of the opening and, and get some of that feedback, feedback.
Good.
I have some suggestions which I will pass on to you as to, you know, how the notification for that particular meeting can be broader than the notification of the meeting that was held last night.
The notifications, the notification for the community meeting was handled by town staff, so however you want to.
Pass it on to town staff in that case. Yeah, that's fine.
There is another question in the Q and A about the width of the alley where Sanctuary will put the emergency line in the event it needs, you know, the line goes out, outdoors.
Yep, so that alley.
The point is, the point is, this, this is, there needs to be a four-foot pathway for people to be able to walk at all times according to I'm wondering if the alley is wide enough for the four-foot pathway, the stanchions and a line.
We're not going to have a line in the alley. Under the plan we presented, it is possible that we will have an overflow of no more than 10 people, either in the alley or in the parking lot behind the bank, which we maybe five and five, but we will not have queuing because people have appointments. So it will be in mind.
But just to answer the question, there are two private areas outside of the building footprint where people can wait. Yes, during site plan review, we measured every inch of the premises, including that alley which does belong to the landlord. There's about a good 12 feet from building to building, which does allow for the, at least four feet, you know, allowance for people to go on the public side outside of the, the alley, as well as to have, you know, a few people wait against the building. So there's ample room. But there's even a better situation with the parking lot in the rear, just to allow people to wait there, so they don't have to wait in the alley.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? That was a question that was in the chat room.
That was in the Q and A.
Or Q and A from Ms. Park.
Currently, there are none in there.
Right, okay. We also have to vote to approve Jamie Savello as manager. Could, could that person, okay, wait. You want to say anything? No? Okay.
No, just a pleasure. Thank you so much for taking the time to get to our part of the agenda and really a pleasure to be working in the Brookline community. Thank you.
Great, great, thank you. Any other questions from the select board?
We also have the, one of the assistant GMs with us tonight too.
Okay, and who is that?
Steve Finney.
Okay. I see your name, Mr. Finney. Okay, I see you. Okay, hello.
Hi, how's it going?
Good.
I'm Steven. I'm one of the AGMs at Sanctuary. Very excited to be here and open in Brookline.
Great, good. Okay, unless there are any other questions, I'd like to call for a vote.
We have one other question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, what's that?
When Neta opened and the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen made the first purchase.
No, I'm not going to buy marijuana.
Yeah, we just want to invite you, if you're around, or the Vice Chair on August 1st to come in when we open at 10 o'clock, if you're around.
Actually, if you, if you sell one of those sows for, for inflammation in muscles, maybe I'll buy one of those. Without THC or TCH, whatever it's called.
All right.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so I move approval of the amended license conditions for Sanctuary Medicinals and approval of the new manager, Jamie Savello, for Sanctuary Medicinals at, on, at a speaking street address. On favor, Ms. Heller?
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Vanscoya?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Did that include the assistant manager also, Steve?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for all your support and the hard work to get to this point. We look forward to being a valuable contributor to the community.
Well, we look forward to your valuable contribution to our tax dollars, tax revenue.
And that too.
And that too, right. Yeah, good.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on, and, and by the way, we, we, we look forward to a very productive and, and, and and good relationship between the town and Sanctuary Medicinals and, and Sanctuary and the community around it. I'm sure that we'll, 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 we'll have that very quickly.
We're going to work hard at it. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, debt exclusion ballot question. And this is basically state-mandated language regarding the debt exclusion that we're going to put on the ballot for November 3rd, 2020. Question of whether the select board shall direct that the following question be placed upon the official ballot for the biennial state election scheduled for November 3rd, 2020. Shall the town of Brookline be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued, I assume that means bonds issued, in order to acquire approximately 3.13 acres of land at the former Newbury College campus on the west side of Fisher Avenue for general municipal purposes, including all costs incidental and related thereto? Any questions about the question before us, the vote that we're about to take? Okay, I move approval of the question as stated for the November 3rd ballot. On favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Vanscoya?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Next, boards and commissions, appointments, the following candidates for appointment, reappointment.
Chair, could I, could I just stop in there and just ask you to officially do the second part of that motion? Or maybe you did and I missed it, but I'd like the board to vote to, to formally file with the Secretary of State a copy of this vote, which is the requirement to get it on the state ballot.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I, I agree. I use the agenda as, as my guide, so that was in the materials. So I move that we authorize, what's, what's the language, Mr. Quellner?
To file, to authorize us to file with the State Secretary, not later than August 5th, 2020, a copy of this vote, attested by the town clerk as required pursuant to Mass General laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), subsection I.
Okay, I, I move that language. On favor, Ms. Heller? Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Ferdinand, Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Vanscoya?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, next. Boards and commissions, appointments, following candidates for appointment, reappointment to boards and commissions will appear for interview. Cannabis mitigation advisory committee?
The, the, the word is wrong. The, yeah. It's the appointment of these, these, this three committees. So the first, you've already appointed everyone on the committee as a slate with the exception of one individual who you hadn't had an opportunity to interview, but you since have interviewed Bruce Levin. And so I believe that is, who's from the Coolidge Corner neighborhood. So I believe that's your final vote, final appointment for this committee. So I will state the name and you can note your approval of Mr. Levin, Bruce Levin.
Aye.
That concludes the Cannabis Mitigation Advisory Committee. On the commission of on the zoning board appeals.
How about the zoning board appeals?
On the zoning board appeals, you've interviewed the three expiring members with expiring terms who all want to be reappointed, and to my knowledge are no other candidates. So the members are, I'll, I'll state them and you can vote, for the full member, Johanna Schneider.
Aye.
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 Okay. Unassociated members, Kate Poverman.
Aye.
Aye.
And Randolph Micklejohn.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so those three individuals are reappointed. And finally, on the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations, there are vacancies, and you interviewed Grace Young Watson. And I will put her name up for appointment to the commission at this time, Grace Young Watson.
Aye.
Aye.
So she's duly appointed to the commission for three-year term.
Okay, and at our next meeting on, on August 11th, we will be interviewing four members of the commission whose terms have expired. That's Callie Race, Bob Leppson, Sandy Batchelder, and Kaye Van Gisiel. So look forward to that in August. And that is the end of our agenda.
So is it possible, I, I just want to get a sense of whether the other members are willing to devote another 10 minutes or so to revisiting what we got stuck on earlier in the meeting?
Okay, unless anyone objects?
And if anyone objects, they, you know, just say so. I, I have a feeling that all five of us are not happy with how that, how that played out. And I also have a feeling that we kind of lost sight of how narrow the difference is on this. We're talking about a vote of three to two. And I'm not sure that that's worth losing the opportunity that we would be losing. And I also feel that we need to be able to send a message to the town that will give people confidence that we're not just going to be endlessly stuck on this very important issue. And I think the other thing we may have lost sight of, I'll admit maybe I lost sight of it, is that the two people who were the most enthusiastic about their part in this, and that would be Mr. Fernandez on the part of the reimagining, and Chair Green on the part of the reform, were the two. They were in the minority. They were the ones who did not prevail in that vote, and yet, in a sense, their votes should count for a little bit more, I think, than the votes of the remaining three members of the select board. And so although I am not happy with why we are at this sticking point, I think it would be important not to let this meeting end on that sticking point. And if Nancy and Heather, who were with the, the majority of three, along with me, who voted for Heather's amendment, are in agreement, then I think for the sake of, of this process, and for the sake of confidence in the board, we should go back to the idea of voting for a reimagining committee chaired by Raul Fernandez and a reform committee chaired by Chair Bernard Green. And we can use the language that was before us in terms of Raoul's committee, and we can use the language that was before us in terms of Chair Green's committees on reform. And we can work, we can work out everything else. I mean, I know that we have concerns about whether these committees are going to be unwieldy in size, and because it's a two-track process with a lot of participants asking for a lot of staff time and a lot of participation by others, I think we can work out those issues. We can work out the concerns of a Martin Rosenthal, you know, who had a lot of concerns about whether this was the best way to go forward. We can work out all of the concerns, but I don't think we could ever work out failing to do this. So I put that in front of people.
John, I, I agree with you that we should work it out. I just can't do it at 11:30 and quarter, 12 at night. I just can't even think about it. I, I really would want us to actually have some language about the coordination of the committees and the interaction, how they, you know, how they work together. That's, you know, I just want to make it clear that we want a coordinated process, and so, but I can't, I just can't even think about it. And I also think we're going to have to reimagine the numbers because we're going to need some people on the, if we do it in that way, we're going to need some people on the reform and some on the imagine. I can't think about what the number is right now. I just, I'm, I'm just too tired, honestly.
What if we were to leave the numbers out of it and just vote on the charge and the leadership?
But, but John, your, your, your proposal is that we vote on Heather's proposal, which Raoul rejected?
No, that's not, that's not my proposal, sorry.
Well, how, how's it different?
No, it, it, it is absent Heather's amendment, Raoul's original proposal for the reimagining task force, and your original proposal for the reform task force.
And then, but then we get into the discussion of whether that's part of the reimagining task force or a separate body, and that's where we broke down.
Well, except as the way it was brought to the committee tonight, it, it was, it was, I, I thought it was pretty clear that we were setting up two separate task forces. Task force on reimagining and a select board's committee on reform.
Well, if that, if, I mean, is that, is that what people are willing to vote on?
Well, what, what I heard at the, at the beginning of the discussion was that you and Raoul were in agreement that, that we would go on those two separate tracks. And that's two votes. And, and what I'm saying is, if you're still in agreement that we should go on those two separate tracks, I'm willing to reconsider and at least take a vote on the charge and the leadership. If there are details to be worked out as to the size of, of the two, the task force and the committee, then we should work out those details, but I don't think they should become the impediment to getting this off the, off the ground tonight.
Okay, what do other people think?
I, I'm open, but my concern is that when we go to appoint members of both committees, we'll be kind of right back where we are tonight, which is, we obviously all have different interpretations of what reimagining means and the skill set that we think should be on the, on the committees. So even if we reach agreement tonight, it becomes real when we start interviewing people and we have to come up with slates, and I don't know whether or not we'll reach agreement when that time comes.
I feel as though it'll be easier to reach agreement once, you know, i- if they are separate and on separate tracks.
Yeah, that was my thinking, that, that you know, on separate tracks, you know, they, they have different criteria and, and, you know, we can come up with you know, people in, in each of the committees and, and go forward. you know, people in in each of the committees and and go forward. Raul, what do you think about this?
I think it only works if there's trust. It only works if there's trust that Bernard is going to be thoughtful about his, about the slate that he puts forward for reform. And it it only works if if you all trust that I'm not a crazy person and that I'm gonna put together a a a slate of people that are committed to doing the work and are serious about the work. Uh, I don't have any interest in um going back and forth over appointments or um, you know, uh, you know, I I don't have any interest in that at all. I'd like to be able to 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 work from those candidates that have applied, put together a slate and have the, and have the Board approve it so we can move forward.
Yeah, my, my, my thinking was that, you know, you would put together, you know, a slate that, you know, I probably wouldn't agree with in in many cases, but you know, that's really not uh my prerogative. My prerogative is the uh, is is would be the Reform Committee. Um, and you know, the they all, the only, you know, guardrail is is the Select Board ultimately. So John, where are you with with your proposal?
Yeah, I.
Running out of time now.
I would like to to see that vote happen before we, um, you know, sign off and.
So let's, let's, let's take a vote to reconsider the um vote that we we took earlier. Um, all in favor of reconsideration, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Vanscoya?
Aye.
I guess I had to vote aye too. Okay, we're reconsidering. Now, what is your proposal? State it again.
Well, I I need some help on this from the other members of the Board. I I do think we're um not quite um all uh, we, I don't think we have a consensus on how many people should be on each of these two committees. And I think it is awfully late for us to make that decision. So if the language as to the number of individuals on the committee on the reimagining task force and the language as to the number of people on the Select Boards Committee on Reform could be stricken um and to be addressed uh subsequently, then I would just say the language as it is with with just those two parts of the language uh stricken in abeyance for now.
Um, I, okay, I I would rather say um, a, instead of, for example, in the uh reimagining task force, instead of saying uh eight Brookline residents, uh say a a a number of Brookline residents to be determined and then go forward like that.
I thought we had reached consensus about the number of 10. And I believe that that's also in the Chair's proposal for the Reform Committee, if I'm not mistaken.
So you're saying 10 on, 10 on each?
Yeah.
Okay, are you agree that, Raul? These are two more people.
Well, I would, I would just say that doesn't fit making it what Nancy mentioned, which was that that important about putting an odd number on the reimagining, because right now there are, there are two other, there are already two and then eight. And so we would either need to make that, that number nine or 11 on the reimagining for it to be an odd number.
Okay, so pick one.
Could, could I suggest nine just because we're, if we're gonna have two different committees at work, it might help to just, nine?
I would suggest one other thing. Um, it's, I don't think it's fair to ask one advisory committee person to go back and forth.
I thought of that.
I think that's awkward and cumbersome and not fair to that person. So I think we should uh have, you know, an advisory committee person on the uh reimagining and advisory committee person on the reform, a different.
Maybe Chair's designee.
I just don't feel comfortable with that being a designee. I think that we can um, I I don't, I just don't feel comfortable with not knowing who that person's.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Raul. I said designee on the reform.
On the reform, okay.
Yeah, the Chair would be on the task force and the designee would be on the reform.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I mean, because the the more appropriate person would probably be the the Public Safety Subcommittee Chair, so.
Got it, got it.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Vanscoya, would you like to articulate your motion?
Uh, before you do that, I just want to make sure, are we good with um me doing the work of putting together a slate and putting that before the the Board?
Yeah, I thought, I thought that was.
Doing the same thing on the reform side.
Yeah, is that, is that people's understanding?
Well, the only thing, the only question I have about it is um, what if we're okay with almost all of them, but we sort of feel like there could be a a better idea for one or two of the s- the slots? Um, in other words, how how do the other members of the Select Board get to have some input into who's on the task force?
Like I said, we're gonna have to have trust.
So through, so through you. I mean, that's a good answer.
Okay, and and you know, if there's someone who's really way out there and and totally unacceptable, we'll just have to have that arg- that discussion.
Yeah.
We don't usually, we don't, we, yeah, we don't usually do slates, but okay, I'll.
Well, no, we we did for the cannabis uh and and a few other committees.
Small business development.
Well, well, yeah, that's true, but we had uh two Select Board members siding, you know, or putting forward the slate. And uh, we selected from a number of different applicants. So I think there was a process there that involved more than just, uh, you know, this is my little bailiwick and this is my little bailiwick here. But anyway, I don't.
In answer to to uh uh Ra- Raul's, you know, concern, yes, I trust you and I trust Bernard. I just want to have input with both of you, you know. I mean, I hope you will be as trusting of us as we are of you a- and, you know, um, listen to suggestions, which I'm sure you will. Um, but uh, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
I'm, I'm trying to avoid an hour-long debate about membership of the task force a few weeks from now or whenever that happens.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and I voted for the Cannabis Control uh Cannabis Committee, um, even though not everyone was anywhere near what I thought was appropriate for for membership. And same thing here.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay, so um.
So just for my, my own um clarification, we are advertising and encouraging anyone who wants to be considered to apply.
Yeah, yeah.
It. Are we interviewing people for this? Or are we going, are we going off these applications and putting together a slate? I just, I just remain concerned that um, we're going to get a lot of applications for either one of these, both of them. Uh, and I just want to make sure that we're clear now how we're gonna handle those applications or not.
Okay, I mean, I think you can sort of um uh shave down, you know, the hundreds you'll get into a a workable uh group and 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 maybe, you know, you do the interviews of people and and um, you know, suggest a slate with some information about them and why you sugge- suggest them.
And Bernard, you're doing the same?
Yeah, I'll do the same. And and I think, you know, the trust piece comes in where, you know, we we trust your, your, your uh argument why, you know, the particular people are are appropriate for the committee. Okay.
So you mean, so you mean we're not gonna interview anybody?
Do you want to interview all these people?
I don't want to interview 100 people, no.
Yeah.
But uh, you know, I I think it, I, you know, I don't know.
Well, why don't we do it this way? Um, we we have interviews of of, you know, the the final whatever number. And um, you know, Raul and me uh interview along with uh another Board Member who uh would like to participate.
Say that again?
So, i- in other words, uh, let's say you uh identify 10 people you want to interview. Um, probably be more. Uh, so you interview them, probably on Zoom still. Uh, and if Nancy wants to participate in that interview, she, you know, she participate in the interview also.
I I have a feeling we gotta go back to that word trust and and I I I'd almost prefer to trust the two of you.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, i- i- in this sense, everything that comes out of each of these two um task, the task force and the committee is al- ultimately coming back to the Select Board. It's gonna stand or fall on the merits of the work. Um, and um, that, that's, that puts pressure on the two of you to, you know, make sure you've got a committee that you think is gonna produce good work and and I think you will. Um, and if you, and if you want some consultation, if you want some, um, you know, so some joint thinking uh about, you know, names, coming up with short lists of names, we're here. Um, but um, you know, in the, in the end, you you're, you're doing the work and uh and we're, we're trusting you to do that work um to the best of your ability, which I know you will.
Okay. Okay, so what uh, what are we voting on?
I think we're voting on Raul's language as proposed for the task force and your language as proposed for the Select Boards Committee.
Okay, and and those are two separate committees?
Yes.
Okay, so um, and and Raul's would have nine members instead of eight.
Right.
Okay, uh, all in favor of that, that proposal?
Excuse me, Bernard, how many does yours have?
Um, I think I put 10 plus me, so 11.
Do you want to stick with that or do you want to go with nine?
Well, no, we we want to have an odd, an odd number, so.
Well, nine, yeah, nine, yeah. I'm just saying the two committees would then have the same number.
Well, no, uh, I I would be the 11th member.
Yeah.
The way it's written, there there are 10 members plus me.
Right.
I'm forgetting about the Advisory Committee.
Um. How did I deal with that?
I think it'd be easier on all of us if we could just talk about a number that is inclusive of the Advisory Committee designee. And does, does nine still work, Raul, for for you, if it's inclusive of the Advisory Committee designee?
Well, that makes it 10.
Uh, Chair, excuse me.
That's fine, yeah.
No, uh, John, that makes it 10, so.
Not if it's inclusive, n- nine inclusive of.
Oh, oh, inclusive of Raul and the Chair and the.
Right, yes, yeah.
Oh.
So Bernard, it comes down to a question, do you want 11?
I'm sorry, Raul, what'd you say?
Sorry, no, no, no. I thought we were going up from eight residents to nine residents, which would make it 11 total.
Okay, so 11. Yeah.
Yeah, and and mine is 10, which would, uh, plus one, meaning 11 included me. And and that 10 would would include, you know, maybe someone from the Advisory Committee uh as well as other people, so.
But to to- total for each of the two is 11.
Right, okay.
Okay.
So, okay, okay, we have a vote. I move approval of that proposal. All in favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Um, Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Vanscoya?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, John, you got your.
Oh, please.
Conclusion, resolution.
Look, this was a unanimous vote and I'm really glad we got there.
Yeah, no, I I appreciate your, your.
And there, there'll probably be hell to pay tomorrow, you know, with, some people are gonna be all over us for this, but.
Yeah, well, you know, get used to it.
That's okay.
Get used to it. You need tough skin to be in this job.
Yeah. We, we don't have to do this again, you know, on the 11th, so. That makes me.
Plenty to do on the 11th. Okay, so that's the end of the meeting. Uh, let's, let's, it's not, adjourn is actually not the right word. I think adjourn means to um, uh, ti- a temporary respite before uh we uh coming back. So I'm trying to think of a word to use to say the meeting's over.
Closed.
Okay, meeting hereby closed.
Just say we're all done.
We're done, that's, that's the technical word. Okay, thank you, everyone. Bye, bye.